Weathersfield Select Board Meeting. Today is December the 9th. We had an executive session. Agenda review. Anybody have any reorganization of the agenda or anything they want to add under any other business? Dave?
Game is an hour.
Do you have money on the game?
No.
Okay. I just was looking to see if you needed to recuse yourself, that's all.
You're fine as is.
Oh, I thought you were referee.
Two or one.
We should be. So, agenda is okay with everybody? Very good. Comments from Select Board Town Manager, Citizens, Topics Not On The Agenda. Select Board, do you go first?
All kidding aside, can they hear us?
August, can you hear us?
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you, August. I'm going to assume everybody else can. If you can't, send us a message. Select Board, any comments? Wow. Town Manager, any comments?
I can reserve it for item number 12.
Citizens, Topics Not On The Agenda. Any comments? Ray? Yes, please. Ray Stapleton, Highway Superintendent.
This isn't really highway related.
We're recording in progress.
This isn't highway related. I had a gentleman ask me today, or notify me today, that he had to work on his septic system. His septic system is in the Village Green in Perkinsville. He owns the old town office. And so, I just want to make everybody aware. We are aware of it. He is going to be digging up an area, and the company is going to put it all back to normal when they're done. I just didn't want anybody to get nervous if they saw digging in the park.
Thank you. Any other comments? Topics, Citizens, Topics Not On The Agenda. Anybody online?
Does the landlord, in that case, I'm pretty sure the answer will be yes, but would they call it rescinding?
I would assume so. It's actually a sewer company is the one doing the digging, and he said they were all, they did everything they were supposed to. They dug my hand, and now they're going to go back to get it because it's too big of a project.
Because the reason I say that is because every house across the street, because we want to save used to be here, and I know this for a fact because I used to become friends with Jay Connor, everyone's two houses, and then Fred Hartman still lives in the garage, they have water pipes generally that come from, not by that house.
DigSafe should take care of that.
Yeah, I know, that's why I asked.
Okay.
Also underground utilities. Okay. Yeah.
Any comments? All right. Six, Review Of Minutes Previous Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 11:18, 2024? I believe that was a deliberative session, correct?
Correct.
Is that what my name has? I'm not Kelly Murphy.
That's right. Please correct. Kelly's last name. I was real tired when I did that.
And I let you know that.
And I apologize.
Any discussion on the minutes?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Brendan.
So where it says decision underneath the decision, we changed that to the Select Board conditionally grants the petition. So if we could just strike denies the petition in part, that would be consistent with what we mailed out.
Actually, the decision is actually issued, signed and written by us. And I'm not sure it needs to even be in the minutes. It's a recorded document that's posted. Can we just exclude the...
Originally, when this was sent to me, I thought it was fine, but I think now, if we could just either exclude the decision from the minutes, or put the actual decision that was mailed out attached to the minutes. Either way. Just looking like 20 years from now, when they look back at the minutes, I just want to make sure that...
Well, and that's what I would say, that... But the decision came after the deliberative session.
Correct.
It was a... The decision is written based on discussion and evidence presented, and only presented at the hearing. And so, everything there is relative to the hearing, the hearing minutes, and the decision is supposed, like I said, just a note that says the decision's been written, it's wherever it is, so that they can go find it. Just a notation to it in the minutes, I think, is all we need. I don't think we need the decision itself in the minutes.
It might not hurt to just have the decision attached to the minutes, just...
And I'm fine with that, too.
Dealing with issues that we've been dealing with, it would have been helpful to have any decisions attached to the minutes, because it would make them easier to find.
Very true. Cannot disagree.
What is your recommendation to remove that and put a reference to where it is, or to just fix the language?
Just attach the entire decision to the minutes, maybe.
So, remove it from the body of the minutes and attach it, attach the signed decision.
Yeah. I don't think it's signed. I don't think anybody signed it, but why don't we just attach it to the minutes, and then it's a public document at this point?
Right.
So then we can put it online.
And after where it says, "The board came out of deliberative session 8:30, the following action was taken." A written decision, which complies with the law, it was issued and see attached.
Now, am I rewriting these? Is that my responsibility?
Rewriting what? Rewriting what?
Or amending these?
You don't have to, no.
I'm not doing that. Okay, okay. Just checking.
Well, yes, wait a minute. Who does the minutes?
So Nicole typically does that, well, she always does the minutes unless there's an executive session, or in this case, it's a deliberative session. But I think it's easy enough for, if Nicole wouldn't mind, and she can speak up if she'll just adjust these minutes to reflect the changes that we're requesting.
Hey, that's fine. That's fine.
Which her?
What's fine, Nikki? What's that mean?
I can fix the minutes.
Okay.
The decision card. Attach the other document.
With just a note that references that they're there?
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, fix my name.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Nicole, if you don't mind, then posting them on the website, that would be helpful.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes that are discussed.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor approving the minutes of 11:18, 2024. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 11:25, 24?
Yes.
And do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Kelly made the motion, and Rika seconded the motion.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any discussion on the minutes? None? Awesome. We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of 11:25, 2024. Do I... All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Yes.
All right. Before we carry on, these microphones, they're very sensitive. You have to speak directly into them. They block out the sound. Like, so like, when I'm talking, and Nate's talking at the same time, this microphone won't pick that up. So I, like Dave and Kelly are sharing a microphone. Are you guys sharing a microphone? So if you want to speak, just grab the microphone and put it closer to you when you're talking into it. We heard some complaints. I don't mean to be so...
I'm singing, excuse me.
I don't mean to be so straightforward with it, but we have had some complaints about not being able to hear certain board members, and then we figured it out that it's because the microphone's way over here, and it's not picking up your voice, so...
Okay, let's carry on with business. You're all set, Brendan?
All set, Mike.
Okay. Next up is Preferred Alternative For A Salt Shed. Ray, Brendan, you taking this? Who's taking this?
Actually, it's Chris Rivet and Martha Harrison.
You're up.
Hi. This is Chris with DuBois and King. And we've presented a couple times now, and I just wanted to quickly go through what the preferred alternative is, discussing with Ray. And basically, that would be alternative two, a shed that is approximately 75 by 50. As we noted before, and I do intend to clean it up a little bit, there are two types of sheds that we've looked at. One is, you know, if you look at the alternatives, or the evaluation matrix we provided, we've included, you know, $750,000 construction and engineering costs that go along with that. And alternative B is a different style shed, where, you know, I can save approximately $100,000 on the total cost. And I think that's where we end up last time, before we got to late, and everybody wanted to move on. And so, that alternative would give our highway department approximately half a year's capacity of salt and the ability to load and unload undercover, which would both improve the operation of the highway department in terms of sand, salt use, as well as improve the safety, given that there's...
I see.
...conducively, would be the current shed, and it would also, you know, help the environment with not having the potential to pollute it with, you know, the salt has happened many years ago. Obviously, it hasn't happened recently, but we still want to make sure that we're making that. So as I mentioned, this is, what's shown on the screen here is the higher cost option, and there is a secondary that is about $10,000 or less. And that's just the size. What we're looking for for this scoping study is just to have a preferred alternative to move forward with. The... That way, the town can go to E-Trans again and ask for an additional grant to go ahead with design and construction of the shed, using these budgetary numbers at this point. And if, as the design process goes through, and there needs to be some adjustments made to size or whatever, that is a possibility as the deadline is finalized. These are conceptual as they are now. Hopefully, that all makes sense.
Any questions? Anybody? Brendan or Ray?
I think at this point, we just have to choose an option. Is that right, Chris?
Yes. So we're just looking for what the preferred alternative is going to be, and I will finalize our report indicating that that's the preferred alternative to move forward into the next phase, which would be design and control.
Now, if we make a decision tonight, or if the Select Board makes a decision tonight on the preferred option, that doesn't commit us to anything at this point. Is that right?
Not necessarily, no. If things come up during the design process, there can be, you know, adjustments made to this design. There's no, you know, if costs seem to be too much for the project, then, you know, we can wish the size down as needed, you know. This doesn't set anything in stone.
Because obviously, we'd have to figure out where the matching funds are coming from, and whether we'd want a special article at town meeting to let the town decide on the matching funds, right? Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay.
So tonight's action does what?
Tonight's action about... Yeah. Finalizes the scoping study. They need an answer from us, so that they can complete it by the deadline, and then we can get reimbursed for the grant. Is that right, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you're to take action tonight? What happens?
We'd be on the hook for the cost of the scoping study.
How much is that? That was a grant also, but if...
Yes, that's correct.
But if we don't complete this process, we're on the hook for it.
Yeah, like if we choose no option, which I don't see why we would do that, but yes, we'd be on the hook. But if we choose an option, we're, which is why they did this.
So what do you need? A motion to accept? What is the recommendation?
The recommendation, I believe, yeah, option number two.
Yeah, alternative number two is the recommendation.
Do I hear a motion to... What would the motion be for, Brendan, to accept or recommend alternative number two?
Altern... Yeah, half-capacity shed with loading area 75 by 50.
And was there something else necessary to get to the 650 number there, or was that enough?
So these are estimates at this point. I think they would be, we'd know the number better after an RFP has been distributed and contractors have bid on the project.
Okay.
Yeah, the final design process as well requires an opinion of the end here, and together an opinion of probable construction cost. So those numbers that we provided in this are budgetary in nature, and they would get refined as the final design is done.
So Brendan, which I'm going to sort of accept you for this purpose, what is, at what point do you come back to us with how we're going to pay for it? Like, that's sort of a map of, this is the proposal on what's grant, what's down, what's writing, what budget here?
So this is, this type of a grant with matching funds in the six figures, we would be bringing that grant application forward to the Select Board with an opinion of cost prior to committing to any grant, and prior to applying.
This fiscal year or next fiscal year? That's what I'm trying to understand.
That would be like next fiscal year, right, Chris? Like FY '27?
I believe so. I think that timeline probably... Well, I guess it depends on when you apply for the grant. So you have to make an assumption essentially that, you know, this would be your budget for the grant application, would be either that 650 or 750 of alternative two. And then, that would help with the, from that number, you receive the grant funding and plan out the, plan out the match.
Okay.
And then as you go through the process, the, once the design is started, then there's a refining of any costs. Again, this kind of gets you to being able to apply for the next grant.
And when does the next grant round open?
I don't know that. Martha might know better than me.
Martha?
I'm going to have to look that up. I can't recall when that's opening up again.
Okay.
I actually think it might be open now. The very next one. By the time we finish this open study, I think we'll be working on it next fall.
So based on the way that grants work, they typically open and close around the same time each year. So that's good news for us, because it would be this time next year, which would be a few months before town meeting. So if we decided to apply for the grant, we could do that, and then put a special article at town meeting if we wanted to do it that way.
And so even if we agreed tonight, right, to the design?
Yep.
Then you guys apply for the grant, you find out the grant, we build out how we're going to pay for it?
Yep.
It ends up being more than we can afford. What are we tied into at that point?
We would just decline the grant.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I'll make a motion to... I'll get ready now. Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the preferred option, which would be half-year storage and being able to drive into...
Yes. Number two on the Weathersfield STP MM23, parentheses for Salt Shed Scoping Study Report, with a projected cost of $750,000, with further action required by the Select Board to move forward with grant funding.
There you have it.
That sound about right?
Yep.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Anybody?
Second.
There we go. We have a second? Any discussion on the motion? The motion is, motion to accept alternative number two from the Weathersfield STP MM23, parentheses for Salt Shed Study Report, with projected cost of $750,000, with further action required by the Select Board to move forward with grant funding.
Martha Harrison, under your head, if you still want to...
We've already, while you're upstairs, we talked to her.
Okay. Any discussion by the board?
Yes.
Go.
I'm a little surprised here that we would be on the hook for $50,000 for engineering to only talk about these alternatives. For me, this is too much spending for that amount of product. So I would certainly be willing to talk about other alternatives, but when I listen to all of the reasons why, I've learned a few things. If this new one fills and makes ill, the narrative is different. It won't fill the salt, and we all loaded inside, and then the loader won't fail, and the truck won't run over as well. That's assuming that all the salt is used.
Dave, I don't mean to cut you off. Can you please move your microphone closer to you? I'm hearing people texting me that they can't hear you, so I just want to make sure you can be heard.
You know, that's the first time anybody said that I don't have a big mouth. That problem.
You want us to put that on a plaque? You might not hear it again.
Yeah.
I love you, Dave.
So I've learned that we also use salt in the sand pile to stop the freezing on the 5,000-yard. Look at the pictures, if you look at the car garage. It's on the, you've got to go around the existing salt shed, because there's quite an incline there to come up over the top, to trickle it down, to use when the sand is being delivered. So if you look at this, at this area, right now, it's really fast and really easy, which is what I was pointing out the last time we talked about, the salt shed. So the salt works in concert with the sand and the screening, which is not in that picture, it's over on the left. And then, but the new one shows that we'd have to dig into the salt that would be housed under a potential new building, and go out with the 544 or the loader, and a bucket full. Now, I've loaded stuff for 50 years, I know what I'm talking about, and sometimes in the dark or whatever, you can get a little sloppy. And you've got a full bucket, you're going to drag that baby all the way around the end of the existing building, up the incline to trickle on some sand, because you've got to use that salt in the 5,000 yards of sand, because it freezes.
Dave, I know you don't like me cutting you off, but I'm going to now, and here's why. Tonight's discussion is really about a scoping study report, and all, everything you're saying is relative, and it's good stuff.
I just gave you the reasons why I would not support article, whatever the number two is. That's stupid. I think it's important to get these reasons.
Okay, okay, all right. So, but you didn't say that. So I was a little confused on where you were going, because what it sounded like to me was an actual construction discussion. And we're not in construction right now. Okay. Then I apologize, and I'll let you continue. Go ahead.
Talking about use after the decision, so the decision is made on this area. I don't think it's been thought out enough to do what I just said, which is not necessarily just loading sand inside and driving the truck out to put out on the road.
So you're proposing a different alternative?
I would like to see one. I didn't think we were limited only to these three, and then when I just heard that if we don't choose one of these three, correct what I'm on, but I thought engineering was okay, that we would be on the hook for $50,000 study engineering fees if we didn't make a decision to choose one of these three. I'm still having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, you have to bring your microphone close.
I do, because I moved it away because they got cut off.
I see.
I get cut off, and my mic's going out the window.
Dave, I recall a night at a meeting where you refused to recognize me. I didn't, I cut you off, but I gave it back to you. And I apologized, and I said, "Why?" And I understand your point now, so please continue.
I don't need to. I gave the reasons why.
So Dave, you're looking for, not necessarily the structure, but the placement of the structure. Would you have brought up, I guess, last time, right?
When you look at the value, I'm trying to also assume that for $750,000, what do we spend on salt? One of my other questions was, what if we don't use salt in the future? And I don't know, things change. They're reducing that use at the state level as well. So it seems like an awful lot of money for a little product. And when we're trying to put together all these budgets and give everybody kind of what they want or to work with this thing, I'd like to know what other towns have done when they run into trouble. You know, West Windsor just built a new one facility. I guarantee you, it didn't cost $750,000. I could buy it a lot. So that's my point. It's about the money, and then it also is about the Weathersfield share of that money, or what if we don't happen to get the grant, because those kinds of funds will start to disappear. So it's about value, it's about everything.
And I guess what I'm trying to say is, we can keep these two things separate. We have the scoping study and what's laid out here. I think it was explained to us by Chris that when we hit construction, we can go one way or the other and make changes as needed. Or, as you just pointed out, what if we don't get the grant? And we make a totally different, separate and individual decision to do something different on our own, regardless. But for tonight...
And what's the motion on the floor?
Just to accept the report.
I thought it was to accept number two.
It is, it is.
Can I give it back?
It is, yes, I can read it back. Motion to accept alternative number two from Weathersfield STP MM23, number four, Salt Shed Study Report, with projected cost of $750,000, with further action required by the Select Board to move forward with grant funding.
That's a whole lot different.
No.
Am I close enough to the mic? That's a whole lot different than saying we're accepting the study. The study includes...
No, not really, because the last, the last part of it says that, basically, this is it. All you're doing tonight is approving this study for alternative number two. When it comes time to move forward with a grant, we may say no. We may decide to do something else. We may move forward with the grant, and we may lose, and not even get the grant.
Is there any way to continue the study for other alternatives, or is this just all done?
Chris, could you answer that question?
If you would like to add another alternative, that is an option.
What would that buy us for time on the cost of the report?
What do you mean?
I think what Mr. Todd was saying is, how much more time do we have before we can complete the report by the deadline of the grant?
For the report?
I think that, I think the deadline of the grant is anywhere in March.
Okay. So is there enough time for you to give us another alternative and work with Mr. Fuller to build out an option that...
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do one for January meeting.
Okay. I will, I'll send you Dave's email in the morning.
You would work directly with Ray.
Yeah, Dave and...
I don't need to be the mister. I'm only one voice here, just one.
Well, and I'm curious, Dave, you know the operation of it, I mean, like, but is it place...
Mark it correctly, if the grant is on two, one, but it's fairly straightforward to get an extension on time.
Is it placement or type of structure that you're more worried about? That was your replacement at the last meeting, that you were thinking that this structure should be moved on the site, not instead of what the structure is.
I think it's both.
I think it was both last meeting.
And, you know, it is value. I mean, we all need to get our arms around the cost of things. This is just one thing. All those things are just going to continue going into the future. They happen to be a lot more expensive. So when you ask yourself what you're spending the money on, and then other things come into play with the whole town, I've always tried to keep my eye on the whole town, not just a single...
just a single, when you start accepting these single things along the way, then you run out of options for other things, not just this subject.
And I don't see what the harm is in studying another alternative if there's time.
And I believe, I believe Chris just said that there's even time for us to apply for an extension on the grant, I believe for the report. Is that correct? Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, extensions can be created, yeah.
Okay. I think Ray had his hand up first.
I know Mike and Dave were there for the original meeting about this grant, or about the salt shed, and we discussed it probably five years ago, six years ago, Ed was still here. So, everybody understands, the whole plan was, we knew we had to replace the salt shed. We knew there's funding available to do it if you do it to certain criteria and in a certain way. We were doing the math, we're trying to get this scoping study done so you know what it's going to cost and what our share would be, as opposed to taking money and building a small shed like West Windsor or where else is done. Where now, if we accept this, we'll be in a position to see whether there is available for resources, find out what our share would be, and say our share is 100 grand. What can we build on our own for $100,000 and have it be better than what this would be for $100,000? Not, you're going to get a $700,000 shed or a $500,000 shed for 100 grand, or you're going to get a little hot thing for 100 grand of our own money. That was the whole principle behind adding this option. We don't, we aren't committed to it. It's an option, I can use this for a tool, Brandon and I can shop for, there's three different sites that have grants. This would be eligible and meet the criteria for federal, state, and a natural resources grant. If we get the numbers and we say it's too much, we can't do that, there's no way we're going to spend $250,000 when we could buy something or build something for 100. That's when we make that decision. But we want to make sure, if we're going to spend $100,000 of our own money to build a shed and have it be what it is we can get for 100 grand, or we can get this for $100,000 and using grant money for the rest, that's what we need to decide. This is not, we're not at that point yet. This is just one step on the train to, path to get to where we need to be.
So, if we vote yes, right, does this, if you miss all the study or no, and you still are often, and you make a decision, and you get to that applying to grant stage, can you make the project smaller after you've applied for the grant? Like, could you...
You would apply for the grant as is, and they would give you a, they'll say, "Yes, we'll give you 700,000, you have to come up with 20%." Then we can come back here and Dave can, we can sit down and figure it out and say, "Well, we think we just do another bunk like West Windsor did, and we don't meet all this criteria, and we spend 100 grand of our own money and build what we want instead of spending 100 grand and matching a share to build something better."
I guess what I'm saying is, right, the third option should be a two one smaller.
There was one that was just, right.
So, if we apply for the grant for the second one, could you say it's too much? We need the third one, which still meets all the criteria, right? Just give it the best score.
Right, yes.
So, that raises a question for me based on the motion. Should we not identify an alternative from this, but simply just identify the report and accept the report?
We identify an alternative.
We have to?
And we have a scoping study with an alternative that's eligible for grant money.
Okay.
If you don't identify it, you don't have an alternative to give them. But it doesn't, you're not committed to any money at all. We shop around, we try to find the grant, we come, like Brandon said again, we come back here and you guys will say, "Yes, go after the grant." Or they offer the grant, and we come back here and you vote whether or not to take it. You might come back and say, "We can spend 100,000 of our own money instead of 150,000 and build our own shed and leave the state out of it." But this is an option, just to see how we can save the most money and get the best product.
And we voted to enter into this contract to do this study to begin with, which means that's why we're on the hook.
Correct, if you don't decide anything...
No matter what.
If you don't decide to do anything, you still have to pay the engineer.
Correct.
You don't have a finished product, so the state's going to say, "We're not going to give you money for the grant if you're not accepting a finished product."
Right, and so we did this based on a grant?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to explain...
No, you're fine. Thank you, Ray.
We did this with good reason, because it allows us to leverage grant funds when it comes time to replace the salt shed. And we did, I think back in 2020, Dave, or 2021, is when we repaired the salt shed with rainy day funds, I think, right? Or was it 2022? Okay. I think it was 13,000 to make the repair back in '21.
I still think that we should take advantage of the two one twenty five opportunity. Because it's not, it's only December 11th right now to take advantage of that time. And what I just heard was, you know, I'm not, I'm not Mr. No, but I've learned a great deal on my farm, and I talked to Ray about adding Bay onto the garage, because I see the future. And when he just said, "Well, we can use it for tools as well if we didn't use it for salt for this particular building and project," see, then that creates quite a division between a worker like me, walking back and forth to go get the tools out of the big barn to go to the little barn, then the little one's not heated, the little one doesn't have a bathroom, the little one doesn't have some opportunity that you'd be wanting to do, not just salt shed.
I need to correct you a little bit, Dave, I didn't say we need the tools.
Ray, could you go to the podium, please? Thank you, Brandon.
I'm calling you down, but I like options.
Yes, I do too. That's why I did this, that's why I was pushing for this whole thing, because it gives us the option to say, "We can spend $100,000 towards a grant and get a bigger project done, or we can spend $100,000, if it's too much, we can spend whatever and get a little shed and be happy for another 30, 40 years." When we first started talking about this, one option was to put the sand in there too. But that was a huge arena of a shed, and that got quickly eliminated because it's over a million bucks. So, no, this is not going to be a tool shed. It's going to be a salt shed only, it's at the minimum. Sorry.
Okay, so, we do have a motion on the floor.
I have one more question.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
When are the meetings scheduled in January? Four days.
January, let's see here. January 13th and January 27th.
Motion to table the discussion on the salt shed until 1/27, of which time we'll have a decision on this grant opportunity. And I think a motion to table doesn't need a second, and it's superseding the motion on the floor.
Motion to table, you sure it doesn't require a second?
Regardless, I'd second it anyways, based on this discussion.
I don't think they allow motion to table.
Motion on the floor to table.
So, more specifically, the reason I asked was, that 27th of January gives time for an alternative if it happens and meets the two one twenty five deadline.
Um, that would come under discussion.
No, I'm glad it was, I wonder, the meeting's been without filing for an extension. So, we just got told by DuPont King that I didn't have a window.
So, Dave, I think if you just like, put the microphone a little bit closer, people in the audience, I know.
I want you, I want you to call Ben for lessons. So, there is a motion on the floor to table.
Did Nikki get that in two minutes?
Nikki?
Nikki, can you hear Dave?
She's coming.
I can, I can hear him now, I couldn't a minute ago now.
Okay.
I think there was a motion made to table?
Yes. Second, and that was by Nathan, that's correct. Okay.
Even if we don't need one.
And, okay, and that is for January 27th. Oh, this is so much fun. It's like herding cats.
Well, I think what's happening is he starts to talk close, and then he goes like this, and then when that happens, the mic's not picking it up.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table, been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, the minutes need to reflect the dates because they're really important. So, January 27th, of which time the decision will be made that will meet the criteria of the two one twenty five deadline for the grant opportunity.
And I'm sure Nikki can extract all of that from the recording. Thank you, Nikki. And any further discussion on the motion?
I just have one thing. Chris, if a decision's made on January 27th, does that give you enough time without an extension to submit our report by two one, which is just three days later? Four days later?
The short answer is no. Technically, by this process that we're using, that MAAAS process, the, we're supposed to come up with a preferred alternative, finish the report, and then present the final report to the Select Board again. Generally, these projects, generally, these scoping studies are done for sidewalks and things that, you know, a lot of town folks are interested in. Most of the time on salt sheds, it just happens at these Select Board meetings and very little public input happens. So, technically, we're presenting the plan, it's once together, preferred alternative, which would usually include a lot of public comment and things to come to a preferred alternative, and then we would present the final project to the Select Board. So, technically, we shouldn't be doing this again, where we presented with the report finalized.
Okay.
And as Martha just mentioned in the comments, D trans needs a couple weeks to review the report as well.
Do you need formal action for us to request an extension?
No, if we, if you're, we're not going to make a decision in time for us to pick to move ahead, then I think we're just going to ask for it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion table signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The motion is tabled until January 27th. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Martha.
Have a good evening. I'll try and get in touch with Ray and Martha and see if I can get in touch with Dave as well to get some additional his thoughts on location for whatever another alternative or something.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Item number eight. I'm sorry? Oh, item number eight, FY26 budget. Brandon?
All right, I just want to kind of go through a recap of like, how we ended up where we currently are, for anybody that's joining the meeting now, or hasn't been a part of it since we first started. So, on July 30th, the Budget Committee held an organizational meeting. On August 28th, the Budget Committee held a regular meeting. And then on September 25th, the Budget Committee held a regular meeting, and some budget information was released. The way, the approach that I've sort of taken this year is to, as the budget's being developed and as it's evolving, I'm distributing it to the Budget Committee, and then I'm giving the Select Board the updated, evolving budget. We don't have all of the information, and some of the information we can't get until it gets to us. Although, we can continue to email people and ask for the information, like workers' comp or insurance, it hasn't, hasn't been given to us, basically. So, what I've been doing is just emailing the Budget Committee as the budget is evolving. On September 9th until current, I've been holding meetings with department heads to discuss and develop their FY26 budgets. On October 5th, I completed and distributed the health insurance analysis and report to all town employees. On October 8th, we held a staff meeting to discuss the report with employees and answer any questions. All employees agreed at that time with the recommendation made in the report. On October 15th, the Select Board took up healthcare and reviewed the report. The Select Board voted unanimously in favor of the recommendation. The recommendation changed our health insurance from Blue Cross Blue Shield to MVP because it was more cost effective and maintained the same level of healthcare for employees. If I remember correctly, I think we saved around 15,000 by making the switch. On October 15th, the Select Board reviewed a cost of living adjustment study, voted for the 2.5% cost of living adjustment for all town employees, which was consistent with Social Security Administration's decision on the COLA. On November 12th, I released the first draft of the FY26 budget absent the solid waste fund budget. On November 25th, the Select Board reviewed the FY26 budget and asked me to provide the police department scope of services and comparables, fire department scope of services and comparables, and determine what the average property value is in Weathersfield based on the FY25 grant list, and calculate the impact on the average property value in Weathersfield in accordance with the increase requested in the FY26 budget. On November 26th, I notified the police and fire departments of the requests and initiated a study. I reached out to Windsor and other towns around us to get budget numbers for police and fire, and scheduled a meeting with the sheriff, Ryan Palmer, who's present today. I asked Bill to be here today and both fire chiefs. I was contacted by Chief Gurney, he has to work tonight because of the snow, he has all the contracts in Springfield at the hospital. He was not able to be present, but he sent Jeremy in his place, who's on our fire department committee. He's one of the seven of us on our task force that we created. On November 27th, the Budget Committee held a meeting to review the draft FY26 budget. I was not present. My wife and I had our first Thanksgiving, and our family was flying in, so we had to pick people up all around the state, and actually, New England. So, Patience Spears attended that meeting, and she took notes and tried to answer some questions. Nicole Gagnon also took very good minutes that I reviewed. And then a couple of days later, I got some questions from a Budget Committee member, and I basically replied via email to all the questions that were asked of me to date. So, going forward, our budget timeline, 12, 9 to 3, 4, which is the day of voting. December 9th, we'll review what we have right now, and I'll collect more feedback from the Select Board and the community. December 10th to January 10th is basically, especially for Nate and Rika, typically what happens is, we meet with department heads, we do everything we've done to date, and then I do a final sweep of the budget. So, I take the budget, I go line by line, and I analyze whether we can have, you know, whether we can save a little bit more, and whether any further adjustments need to take place and so forth. So, between now and the next meeting, I'll be doing that final sweep, and including any feedback that I've received from the Budget Committee, members in the community that I speak with, and the Select Board and so forth, working with department heads. December 18th is a Budget Committee meeting to discuss the budget, where more feedback will be collected. And then on January 8th, there's a second Budget Committee meeting, where more feedback will be collected and so forth. And then on January 13th, the Select Board will receive the budget as final as I can get it, to where the Select Board can then vote to approve it if it wishes, or start to hold special meetings, or, you know, really, January 13th to like, the 18th should be a decision to approve the budget. And then, the Town Office assesses the town report, mails it to all residents in Weathersfield. On March 1st, we have town meeting. On March 4th, there's voting. So, that's basically the timeline that we have going forward. Any questions on like, the recap or the timeline going forward?
Is this on the recap or the timeline? Dave?
You're asking some questions. Didn't we, a year or two or a few years in a row, this seems to be a little more right up to border of law, turning us into a kind of a forced situation, like we do a pumpkin. Did we wait until January 13th for the board to get involved? Adam?
I'm not asking that at all. The board could make a decision now if it wished, but it really can't, because we're receiving certain information late. Like, we didn't get workers' comp and insurance information this late last year, or the years prior. So I can't, I can't make any of those calculations until I have our rates. I could estimate, but...
No, no. Because it seems easier for me as a board member to take these up not all at once, and to say, okay, like, tonight, for instance, because I think we've done this the last two years, my head, you know, we've taken up, and we've gotten like, and I think last year was like, way before Christmas, we were all gone, because I remember you, like, doing a celebration dance, almost, saying, oh my God, this is like wonderful, but we took off, for instance, solid waste, and then we kind of made precision. We didn't intermingle like that with the general fund or the highway, and then we knocked off the highway, because that is separate. The general fund is hard, because it has multiple components.
The problem is, is workers' comp and insurance is in every single budget. So like, I can get us as close as I feel comfortable with, but we haven't received that information yet, and that's one of the pieces that affects all 11 departments.
Workers' comp and...
Workers' comp and insurance. Not, not health insurance, I'm talking like, building insurance, vehicle insurance, liability insurance. We've received nothing. We reached out last week, and then we reached out again today, and we should have that in the mail. I guess it's in the mail, so...
E L T T carrier?
Yes.
And they also carry a working time?
Correct.
I don't know, just doesn't it feel that way to you, Michael, a year ago, we did this kind of thing, and I mean, that's...
We had the information soon. We had all the information we needed at that time, whereas this point, we're just waiting for two pieces.
Some of the things are actually ongoing moving targets, even including with healthcare. So if somebody changes their status, it's absorbed within the dollar amount that we make to put in the article. We can't do anything about it, it just happens.
That's right.
So that is a moving target as well, that we live with?
It's totally, I mean, we're creating a budget in, you know, October, November, December, it doesn't go into effect until July.
Oh, that microphone doesn't work?
I have a poor good...
Oh.
You know, so it's, we, we get as close as we can get, and history has shown that we've done a really good job at doing that. But anyways...
So you're not looking for, when I just saw that timeline, you're not looking for much of a decision from the board until January 13th?
I'm looking for like, as much feedback as you can give me, to help me shape the budget. If it, if it, if you don't like something in the budget, or you like something in the budget, now is the time to tell me, so that I can, I can do what I can to make any changes. Yes.
Okay.
Right, right the second.
Yes, we are having those discussions tonight.
So...
Are we ready to go there?
We're not ready to go there yet, are we?
Well, so I'm going to continue through, I have, I have like, a few more slides. And then we'll, we'll stop, like, we plan on touching with police, and then fire, and then we can go into the rest of the budgets. But to answer the question that was asked in the last meeting, which I thought was a really good one, because we haven't done it in the past, we've always used the $100,000 of property value, which we'll still put in the town report this year, but this is a really good number. So, what is the average property value, and what's the financial impact of the proposed tax increase, based on the average property? Our municipal listed grant list is 346 million. Our parcel count is 1635, so you take those two numbers, divide it, divide the 1635 into the 346 million. The average property value in Weathersfield, based on the FY '25 411, or grant list, is 212,000, $99.76. The proposed tax increase based on the FY '25 411 is, and the proposed FY '26 budget is 0.0353, so three and a half pennies. The financial impact on the average property value is $74.23 annually, or $18.55 quarterly, or $6.18 monthly. So, that's where we're at in this current moment, without, the budget is final up until, up until workers' comp and insurance. So...
Is there not at all in there for those totals, at all?
Oh, you did...
Are the current totals included in there?
So, yeah, so that's actually, I, I put numbers in the budget that are, that mirror the FY '25 budget. Usually, there's not a ton of change in those numbers, like...
I just wanted to make sure there was nothing in there, just get more back, step for shock, a glass...
It's going to be like, really close to what you see now. We haven't had any significant claims. I don't, I've heard that it could go down, but I, I won't know that until I get the numbers. So, I think the budget's like, close enough to where we can say, like, it's three and a half cents, is what we're proposing for an increase. So let's jump into the police department. My plan for police and fire is to just give a quick introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to the chief of police on this one, to give the Weathersfield Police Department's scope of services. So again, we're asked to provide the scope of services of the Weathersfield Police Department, and how that stacks up against comparables. So the FY '26 Police Department budget is 398,000. The proposed level of service is 120 hours per week, which equates to $63.79 per hour. The sheriff's office hourly rate is $75 per hour, so for 120 hours of service, it would be 468,000. So the difference between the sheriff's office and the Weathersfield Police Department is 69,930. There's a little bit more to it than that, because there are some things in the budget that are not in the budget this year, because we didn't get to the capital plan. So we currently utilize the opt-out for health insurance, that saves us 20,000 annually. We have not implemented our capital plan, so the 20,000 that should be going into the budget each year, to be transferred into reserves to replace police cruisers per our capital plan, is not in this budget. We also have two part-time officers that are proposed in this budget, that do not receive health insurance benefits. So, what would happen if we didn't have the opt-out? Like, we had somebody that decided to opt-in? We'd have to add $20,000 to the budget, and, and we had the 20,000 in the budget. So basically, that would add 40,000 to the budget, and then our, our hourly rate would be $70.20. So to be completely fair, what if we had three full-time officers? Like, what if we decided, okay, we have enough money for two part-time officers, they're both 20 hours a week, why not just have three full-time officers? And included the capital replacement. We would add an estimated 30,000 to the budget for health benefits, if the opt-out was not utilized, and the budget for the Weathersfield Police Department would increase to 468,000, which would then be $75.01. So, at that point, if all of those things changed, and it was apples to apples, it would be $75.01, but this year, it's, it's not that, it's $63.79. So I'll turn it over to the chief.
Go. You have the floor, chief.
No, that, that's what it is. So, we're always trying to expand and make the community safer and better. When I approached Brandon this year about hiring a, a part-time officer, it's to cover weekend shifts and when officers are on vacation. What we've been finding out is, the fire departments have been going to medical calls, and they've had to wait, because the state police can't respond in time. And the way that the trend is going now, with mental health illness, they could wait for 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, for an officer to respond. And that's if, if, you know, ESP is readily available. So when I approached Brandon about this, it was to get another officer on here, to help out the town and make it a safer place. And I think Dave can sit there and tell you when he listens to the scanner, that he sees how busy it is here. When I took over 11 years ago, I made an effort to bring the best I could to this town. So I have always looked for Level 3 certified officers, the full-time officer in the state of Vermont, versus a Level 2 officer. We do utilize a Level 2 officer and one of our part-timers, but myself, Officer Franchi, and Officer Graham are all full-time certified officers, which means that we can handle any call that comes in to our department. The Level 2 officers, there are certain calls that they're not allowed to handle, so they'd have to call in another officer to, to take that complaint. That was a choice that I made years ago, that I wanted to have full-time officers, even if they were in a part-time capacity. What we're looking to do with this part-time officer is not only fill a void in the weekends, where we need coverage, but also let them use the grants that we have applied for, which is governor's safety highway grants, we have three of them now, we have occupant grant, a DUI grant, and a designated, a distracted driving grant, I mean. So we can also have them work more hours, and use that grant money to have them on the road as well. So overall, what we're trying to do is add better coverage for the town with the resources that we have available.
Any questions?
Chief, do you mind going through your scope of services a little bit? I have it up on the screen here.
Did they get a copy of it? Because I actually have copies.
Yes. Yeah, everybody has a copy.
Right there. Okay, I didn't bring my glasses, so this is going to be... So this is just a, a little bit of the things that we offer. The one thing about our town that's different is we are a DSC investigator. So that's a title that I've taken on. So a DSC investigator, if, if we go in untimely or something, where the person has been found in their house, we have to have an investigator come out with medical examiners. A lot of agencies have them, I'm the one in our town, so there's been a lot of times on the weekends that I've come out where we're going to have to call the state police. We work tirelessly with all the agencies, whether it be the highway department, the fire departments, other agencies like Land Juice, where they can call us, and we'll go out and do standbys for them, we'll help them do traffic control, we'll go to medical calls. Currently, we're responding to a lot of calls on this side of town, whether it be medical or fire calls, just because of the status that, that they're having. We're starting to do more of getting involved in the schools, having lunch with the kids, participating in events that they're doing. We get to use a lot of the money for grants, so you'll see us out on the road a lot during, we're, we're starting a campaign this Friday, actually, where it's motor vehicle enforcement. So we'll be doing that until January 1st. And I think because of all the, the knowledge that we have in our department, we get to have a good, close relationship with the other agencies, so we get, we can go help out Windsor, we can help Springfield, we can help ESP, and they do the same for us. So, we're, we're able to utilize our resources to bring a better, I don't know what the right word is, but...
I mean, the biggest thing is like, crime in Windsor affects Weathersfield, any crime in Springfield...
And unfortunately, we, we're kind of that town that's in the middle of everything. We have Windsor to the north, we have Springfield to the south, we have Claremont to our east, we have Ludlow. And unfortunately, the way our court system is, it seems like we're dealing with the same people over and over and over and over again, which does take a strain on us. Just a couple of weeks ago, I ended up spending six hours with one person, because I had to deal with them and take them up to court and bring them back home. So, the, the benefit of adding another part-time officer and utilizing these grants, hopefully will, will minimize our downtime of when there's not an officer available in this town.
What would you say is sort of a bit, like, part of my, my reason for asking is just understanding this, right? When I get asked about, hey, explain the budget to me, or what, is me understanding exactly what, because you do a lot, but a lot of it's invisible, right? So I'm curious, like, what is, like, if you think about like, percentage of like, the time you're spending, what is, what is like, the, the top three things that are kind of sucking, you know, that are, that are using officer time, right?
Uh, right now, it's the courts, and our, our, the way they're dealing with these warrants. Our caseload is, anytime we make an arrest, it's, it's a couple of hours of just doing paperwork, if that's, that's not including transporting somebody to the, the facility to have them fingerprinted and processed. That, a, a easy arrest for us is probably a good two and a half to three hours worth of paperwork.
And then, right now, this time of the year, it's a motor vehicle. We have so much traffic because of a key mountain and everything, and it's taking a ton of our time, we're getting a lot of citizens complaining about the traffic various times of day and night, so we're trying to focus our efforts in those areas.
Any other questions?
Were you asking specifically, Nate, like, because that's the take that I, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know if I needed the answer of like, court time, but were you like, more, because I would be interested in learning, is it speeding, is it alcohol, is it drugs, is it what, you know what I mean? Is it what, or is it theft, or, you know what I mean? What is like, what's the most common?
Well, right now, yeah, right now, we're dealing with the DUI cases, we're dealing with a lot of thefts, we're dealing with a lot of trespassing, there are a lot of warrants in the past, we've decided to be warrant, or someone had an active warrant, and we issue a paper on the side of the road, and then show up in court.
Since, I'd say, September, that's changed, and the judges are wanting to see these people who have failure to appear. Unfortunately, if, if, you know, if we pick them up at 9:30 in the morning, and the sheriff's department doesn't have somebody available, we have to sit with that person, and now we have to take them to Windsor, Woodstock Court. And we have to sit and wait for them, until the judge is ready to see that person, and then if the judge holds them, then they've got to be taken to, to the facility, which is usually handled by the sheriff's department. If they release them, we give them a ride back in the town.
I think my, my comment would be, but it's going to be the same for the fire departments, that some of these are, well, they are, not some of them, all of them are unpredictable. You just can't know where they're going to take place, or, well, I'll take that back a little bit with, with, on the, on the traffic issue, obviously, it's on the main run, which the chief has already... One of our downfalls here is exit 8. So, I'm sure you're struggling with the traffic coming from the south, to get off at 8, to either make your way to Claremont, or Windsor, or something.
And people are still trying to get used to the lower speed limit.
Right. And then, after the traffic, then you have other things that are happening. But...
Our, our main thing is, we try to be visible out there to deter crime, we try to be proactive by driving around. Unfortunately, in this line of work, you never know what call you're going to deal with, where it's going to be, or how long we're going to be tied up on something.
At this particular time, Brandon, did you, or Bill, did you fit into the sequence somewhere, and I know that you did this hourly rate thing, but, I mean, we have the advantage of having three almost brand-new cruisers. That's like, uncommon. So I don't know how that factors in, because you have to figure in the hourly rate, including transportation, for anything. Let, you know, let's just say that we didn't have a...
Yeah.
We have to include something for cars.
So what we did there, like, no, but, we do have three new cruisers, so we didn't, and we wanted to do the capital plan this year, but other things happened, and we didn't have town to finalize it. We want to, when we present the capital plan to the town, we want it to be comprehensive, and we haven't had the time to complete it. So, we decided to do that next year.
That wasn't where I was going with the question?
I was, I was going there.
I was thinking about when the chief...
Dave, Dave, hang on, let him finish his answer.
Okay.
So, in this slide right here, if we had put the $20,000 into the budget for capital replacement, which is what we plan on doing in future years, then, then it would be $70.20 per hour. So no, this doesn't include, this includes everything in the budget, so the whole 398,000, divided by 52 weeks, divided by 120 hours, with the exception of this $20,000 for, to replace police cruisers, but includes the fuel for police cruisers, the maintenance of police cruisers, and so forth, insurance for police cruisers, everything.
And the other thing is, we utilize grants whenever possible, to try to save taxpayers... taxpayers' money. So during the DUI OP grants, we have been able to get the radar signs that you see throughout town. We've got radar units for cruisers, all that stuff we've added to our, through our budget, but we've been able to get grants for that. And anytime we're looking to get some new piece of equipment, first thing we're able to do is try to see if we can get a grant. So that way, we can offset our budget, so we don't come in open budget.
Dave, go ahead, Dave, you had...
So, yeah, and I don't know where that fit, no, my whole point was that the board has an advantage, the administration has the advantage because it has three newer cruisers in their hand. They don't have to worry about the future, at the moment.
Yes.
Um, there was something else, but I just, I just lost my train of thought.
Well, that's, when we did get the cruisers, that's, we set ourselves up, if you remember, that they're warranted to 120,000 miles now. So when I spoke to Brandon when we started doing this, this plan, is anything over $120,000, we lose a lot of money, we try to, we just sell it or trade it in. By that point, usually, especially in law enforcement, those cars are kind of at the end of their lives, especially in our roads and all their roads, our cars take a beating on those roads. That's why I pushed our, to, A, have a spare car, which is our charger currently, and then to make sure that we start rotating these cars through. So that way, when we do trade them in, we can get $70,000 versus the $2,500 we got for the one car. Or we're not on the hook for a $4,000 bill once the car comes out of warranty that we're now stuck with, and then maybe keep the car for another two years. We have to prepare, we always need to have, we can't have one broken down. So we have to make sure that what we do have, we maintain the fleet, that we keep it updated, we keep it repaired, so that way, God forbid anything happens, we can show records of our maintenance, and that we can prove that we've done everything we can for those cruisers.
Dave?
So, my question might have to go to Brandon, I didn't want to, so, but maybe you can answer too, Bill. So in the, in the, I think it was in the last meeting, it was talked about that if the option was granted to have the part-time police officer, that some of the monies would be offset by lowering overtime. And I, I questioned that because of where the cases go, and so you would then, I don't know that, because I'm not a policeman, but, but if I was on a case, for instance, and it took me to do it, because the new person, then you'd overlap, it wouldn't, so I don't know the administering between not allowing overtime and then using some overtime previous funding to offset the cost of a...
Well, unfortunately, there's always gonna be a little bit of overtime...
Right.
...just because of the nature of our game. But we're, this is where we can also utilize grant money to offset some of that cost. So instead of having overtime on our budget, we can use the DUI grant if we're out doing motor vehicle enforcement for that, or we can use the occupant grant if we find somebody who's doing excessive speed or something. That's what those, and distracted driving, that's what those grants are there for. So we can offset, and that's what we have done in the past, been able to offset our overtime costs by using these grants. The, we're, no matter how you get away from it, there's always gonna be some sort of overtime, and that's just unavoidable. We have that put in our budget. We've never gone over that, but it's not to say that it will never happen. But we do try our best to, you know, monitor our, our budget as we're going through the year, and then if we do notice something that's kind of getting spiked, we'll take a look at why it's getting spiked. A couple of years ago, we did have a payroll issue, but it was because we brought on a new officer, because one officer was retiring. So we had an overlap for a month of that. But other than that, we try our best to keep everything within our budget.
I guess that was where my question came about sheriffs, right? Is, is if we're thinking about filling those gaps with sheriff time, where we had, where Brandon had said we had a weekend where we didn't have coverage, which is where my question around, that I had asked last time, is exploring using sheriffs to support the department in those gaps, or to offset the overtime costs instead of bringing on a part-time officer. And that was my question around, like, have we explored that, or thought about that?
No, because we, we haven't, we haven't explored that or thought about it yet, because our overtime isn't out of whack. What we're trying to do is get another officer in here to cover our downtime, and it's cheaper for us to have an officer and pay them hourly than it is to outsource. Most of these places are getting $75, $80 an hour to provide coverage. So I'd rather have that $80 given to me in my budget, so I can hire an officer to provide that coverage to our town.
Dave?
I've only one more. So I know that Ryan, I think he's on, the sheriff. So I'd close by just saying thank you to both of you. I know Bill said a moment ago that I listened to the scanner and I, you know, it's not on very much. It just happens to be at the wrong time that I hear these calls. I mean, I'm not really that up on this stuff. But I hear the fire departments, I hear the, our town police, I hear the sheriffs, I hear that some of this stuff, and the, the calls frankly are crazy, and they're providing safety for the rest of us. And so I would just close by asking that, to remember that you could be farmer-friendly.
[laughing]
That when you see, like, a silver or a tanish pickup truck...
An expired tag.
...or some red tractors, that we would be, that we'd be waving. That would be my close.
Most, most of you have seen my blue lights, I can tell you that.
Thank you.
Travis, Josh?
I'll share with you.
I'm not greedy.
So my question would be, if we look at emergency services, approval and retention is just a huge issue. So the question to the chief, if we look to start people out as part-time officers, and we get new individuals in town, is there a potential for them turning into long-term officers, full-time officers?
Good question, thank you.
It would be, it would depend on the budget. I, so over the years, we've, we've thought, I, there's a lot of people in town who don't believe a police department needs to be in this town, which bothers my mind, but that's, you know, everybody has a right to that. I would love to see this department expand, only because our calls are going up. When we're not here, VSP handles a lot of our calls, and they handle quite a bit of calls. I don't like when, I carry my phone here all the time. People call me on the weekends, they get called 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. I hate when we don't have somebody on the weekend, and I'm listening to these guys at the Windsor Hotel waiting for a police officer to show up. That breaks my heart that we're at that.
I don't want to get any of these guys hurt, and I don't like when they're waiting 20, 30 minutes. I don't think that's fair to the community. So that's my push to try to get more, more manpower here, and by using part-time officers, we can get that coverage at that minimal cost to the town. Would I love to have another full-time officer? Yes, I would. But that would substantially raise our budget.
What's the, like, spend on the grants that you're talking about?
So they're, they're given to us yearly.
We have to fly them every...
Like, around April, we start the application process, and then it's, our grants go from October 1st to September 30th. So since I've been here every year, we've applied for them. Only last year was the first year we applied for the distracted driving grant. And in that timeframe, we have gotten, all of our cars have gotten rated for units. We've got the three signs, we buy flares every year that's utilized both by us and the fire departments. We've bought high-visibility jackets. So all these things, I think I submitted it probably five years ago, it was well over, like, $300,000 worth of stuff. And that's, I think this year, we're gonna get about $18,000 in overtime money for officers to patrol the streets. Yep?
Yeah, that's, that covers almost the entire amount you're trying to remove out. Sheriff Palmer, would you like to address the board at all?
Well, I guess, I didn't know if you wanted, if you got my request information, response, I kind of wrote a letter. I'm not sure, you know, I don't want to get any of the chief's thunder right now. You know, still stuff to say, but, you know, for us, the majority of the folks out there on the board, on the preview, a couple of years, experienced a lot of two officers, if they get to a pick-up where they need to call for backup, we'd have that. We've got about 30 scoring on, fortunately, 24 of those are working basically full-time for us, we have, you know, six or seven that were kind of a part-time role. We've got some folks in the wings that would love to come on. We've got several hundred thousand in Governor's Highway Safety Grants, well, I think almost 200,000 in that Governor's Highway Safety Patrol that the chief was talking about. We have six or seven death investigators on staff. We actually, certain, our lieutenant student in Weathersfield, or Westminster, BCI, has asked us to kind of cover any dead bodies in our, in our towns that we patrol with, so we do, you know, death investigation. We've assisted all the, eight other municipal police departments in the county all the time, VSP, we have a K-9 unit, we work on our schools, we have some certified school resource officers on staff, you know, we've assisted the Weathersfield, where they're in, scared the fire departments at different times, when there's been some, some crazy stuff going on. And I think I have, you know, field training officers on staff, I've got firearms instructors, all these different things. You know, we do a lot of interaction with our communities, and big on, you know, the community, interaction, community policing aspect of things. But, you know, I'm just kind of here responding to the request for information and throughout there, so I won't ramble on too much. You folks see kind of what we can offer, and, you know, we bring five or six or 10 people to the, you know, the sergeant warrant, things like that. We also work with our federal partners and everything else. So I guess I'll open up if there's any questions, because I don't want to ramble on, waste anybody's time.
Any questions for Mr. Palmer?
For, for everybody, even, no, VSP is not here, but is dispatching okay? Because I know that we spend money on dispatching. So do you guys, are you satisfied with interconnecting, and maybe that branches out into fire as well? So do you get the radio communications that you need, or how's that working? I know it's Hartford Dispatch, I don't...
Well, Hartford does, the fire departments.
Okay.
We go through VSP, but they're, they're supposedly still doing that study to figure out, getting away from, like, letting towns pick their own dispatcher, so we're still waiting on that. There, there was a chance we were gonna go to Windsor, or not Windsor, I'm sorry, Hartford for a little while, but then that got put on a backburner while the state wanted to do their study. I believe you guys use Woodstock now, correct, Ryan? Sheriff?
Yeah, we're using, we're using Woodstock, you know, to answer your question, Mr. Fuller, is that, yeah, dispatching's okay. It gets a little murky when you have, you know, we're on Woodstock, Weathersfield's on VSP, maybe the fire's on Hartford. It gets, it can get a little convoluted, we do the best, we all try to have interoperability and listen to each other on the radios and this type of thing. So dispatching the state is still, you know, there's still some work to be done, but it's okay right now, I guess, is my thought.
Any other questions?
Well, with the agencies, I think it's important to, to talk to us or other boards or towns about the difficulties, so that we can make that known as well. So I know that we're funding those things. I just, I think it's really important that all the agencies have the same radio communications to work together. They got to.
Yeah, that, and we've also discussed having one computer system, because currently we have two in the state, and unfortunately, I can't see what Windsor's doing next to us because they're on a Spillman system, and we're on Valcor, so it's, I wish the state would get on one system.
And that's not, you know, Hartford, anyone who dispatches through Hartford, you know, I'm the same thing, I'm on the same system that Weathersfield is, it's a state recognized in the CAD system. And Hartford, five, six, seven years ago, decided to go their own, but they dispatch for, say, Windsor, you know. If I'm working, I can see that the chief is on, but I can't see what Windsor PD's on, and, and both of us, you know, respond and help Windsor, they help us back and forth. So there is, you know, there's some, certainly some things that could use improvement, like she said, it would be a lot better if everybody was on the same system. That's not, Hartford just isn't going to do that. And so we're kind of stuck in the pick-up where the biggest dispatch center in this county, in the area, what kind of stock?
Any, any other board members? Thank you, Sheriff Palmer. I see August Murray is on, I believe he's the chair of the Budget Committee. August, do you have any comments from the Budget Committee?
Uh, no comments, other than to say, Brandon has been keeping us very well informed. In our last meeting, I thought we captured some of the key thoughts, shared those with Brandon, he responded. After our next meeting, I think we'll probably have a letter for the Select Board and Brandon with, with any recommendations or, or concerns that may arise. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, August. Any, any other questions for the chief or Sheriff Palmer? Thank you very, very much. Brendan, I think that goes back to you. Yes?
Uh, yes, sir.
Continue through the budget.
All right, so Weathersfield Fire and Emergency Services. So there's been, obviously, discussion, and I haven't provided full updates on what's been going on in the Weathersfield Fire and Emergency Services world. I'm gonna give just a couple of key points, and then I'd like to shift that over to what the, to the budget. There's been questions about the Municipal Fire Department and us combining the budget and so forth, but we didn't create the Municipal Fire Department, the Select Board did in 2019. So the Select Board voted to create a Municipal Fire Department in 2019, and that hasn't been undone. So a budget was presented at town meeting to hire a full-time fire chief. That, that budget was voted down, but not the Municipal Fire Department. In 2021, we took over all fire department expenses and pulled in their books into our accounting software. We developed one contract for both departments. And when we did that, in the past, there was two, two contracts. When we created one contract, it put both departments on the same terms, and basically did everything that a municipal fire department would do without dissolving the 501(c)(3) status of both departments. So it made each department subject to all of our policies in town, for example, without creating one fire department with one chief. In 2023, after learning for two years and one, one version of a contract that we wrote in 2021 and agreed to, and by the way, both fire departments agreed to the contract, obviously, and both fire departments signed it, and the Select Board approved it and so forth. In 2023, the contract expired. We talked about what worked, what didn't work, and then we strengthened that contract, and we, we evolved that contract even further. I created the Fire Department Committee Task Force, and that's authorized by statute. I can, I can make appointments of, of Fire Department, according to statute. So on August 29th, we did that, and we discussed, the purpose of it is to discuss the future of fire services in Weathersfield. And we've been doing that, and it, the committee is comprised of the fire chiefs from both departments, the deputy chiefs, the captain, and Jeremy. There is three members from both departments on that task force, and then I'm the chair of that task force. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, and basically, the, the committee voted to combine the three fire, fire slash emergency services budget that we had into one budget. During the November 13th meeting, each member on the committee stated that it's in the best interest of the town to have one fire department with two stations and one chief.
Oh, okay.
So although the Fire Department Committee agrees that it's in the best interest of the town to establish one fire department with, with one chief and two stations, we're like, we're not there yet. That's not what this budget does. There's a lot of discussion between us, the administration, and the fire departments to talk about that. Over the next several months, I'll be attending both fire, both fire stations to collect feedback from their memberships. So just to hear everybody in both fire departments and the firefighters and answer any questions they may have if we decided to do one department with one chief and two stations. they may have if we decided to do one department with one chief and two stations, for example. I'm not pushing that and the committee is not pushing that. We're just sort of trying to figure out, how can we operate the fire departments and emergency services the most efficiently to meet the best interest of the town? So we're not just looking at that, we're looking at other things, too. We plan to hold public hearings going forward with the Fire Department Committee slash Task Force. And if we decide to change anything, we plan on developing a transition plan, and that transition plan would then be presented to the Select Board to let you guys know where we're at after all the studying and discussions that we have, so that we can bring the board into the loop at that point. But this is the FY26 budget, and we're not, I don't think, talking about the Municipal Fire Department tonight. And I don't think it needs to come back up because it was already voted on. So unless the board wants to, wants to bring it back up and bring it back to the Select Board, then we could, we could do that on a future agenda. The FY26 budget does give some flexibility to provide firefighters with a stipend. The FY26 budget could create a Municipal Fire Department, the last budget could have, and the budgets before that, for example. There's a grant round that will open soon, and actually I have some experience with this grant from the city of Fall River. I applied for it and we received, or the city of Fall River applied for it, and we received 1.2 million. And that, basically, that money paid wages to firefighters and police officers. This particular grant that Chief Dauphin brought to my attention is, it would assist with any transitional costs if we did decide to go that route. And I'll turn it over to Jeremy and Josh Campo.
Before you take the floor, could we go back to the first page, number three? I just want to, in 2023, the contract expired. In 2020, I'm sorry, could you hold off on talking while I am, please? In 2023, the contract expired and we strengthened the contract, et cetera. We saw, we did enter a new contract and that has been signed and agreed to, yes?
Yes, and that contract expires on June 30th of 2025.
I just wanted clarification on that in the, in this discussion. Go. Thank you, Josh. And thank you, too.
I apologize.
You're fine.
Come on up, Jeremy. We're going to do this together. Both fire chiefs are working, both deputy chiefs, I believe, are working. So we're here to join you tonight and answer any questions you may have. We did, we did put together a brief scope of service. It was a little vague as to what, what was being sought. So essentially, we respond to everything and anything. The fire departments over the last decade, I'm going to say, have kind of been the catch-all for any agency that doesn't want to handle a call. State Highway doesn't want to come out to cut up a tree, the fire department goes. It's after hours, town highway doesn't want to come out to cut up a tree, call the fire department. Someone's smoke detector is going off, call the fire department. Oh, the batteries are dead, call the fire department. We do it, we're happy to do it, but that's, that's kind of where things have gone. We're up on the highway all the time, waiting for state highway, waiting for state police, making scenes safe. That's a lot of what we do, but essentially, it's, it's anything and everything. We did get a call this summer for a cat in the tree. That happened. We didn't go, talked with Kathy Sullivan. She said best off to let the cat do what the cat wants to do, but nonetheless, we did receive that call because that's what the person thought was best. As of today, I pulled the new report, we're at 523 calls. This was done on November 30th, and we were 506 as a town from January 1st to today. 60-ish percent medical response, the other 40% is your car accidents, your alarm activations, true fires, mutual aid responses to other communities for fires and such. We, in our new software program, we have, we have gotten a Scottney onboard with inputting data. The town, the West Weathersfield Fire Department has right around 900 training hours this year so far, 900 man-hours. We threw this 1,000 hours in because I know without a shadow of a doubt, a Scottney has over 100 hours. However, we are not, we have not gotten them that far into this software to input that data. So as we move forward, January 1st, we want to try to get that data going into this system so we can then track the training hours for both departments. Both fire stations do at least two trainings a month, however, we're there pretty much every Tuesday at both places. There is, you know, there's the typical once-a-month meeting, there's going to be the occasional time we're not there. We won't be there Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve this year, but other than that, we're there pretty much every Tuesday. And we, we train. We train hard. We're trying to advance our training. Three years ago, we formed on the west side, non-transport rescue squad to better serve the residents where it takes Golden Cross a little bit longer to get there. And we're currently working with the town manager to do some specialized rescue training. As we've seen with the natural disasters, we're waiting and we become an island to some degree. Ludlow can't reach us, we can't reach Ludlow, and there's not enough resources to go around. So, you know, by design, if we get called, we're going to, we're going to handle the emergency. We'd rather have the training to handle it appropriately. Jeremy also works for Golden Cross, so he has, he has a unique perspective to work with both departments as well, and I'd turn it over to him for a little bit of what he's seeing, and then, then we could jump into any questions.
So ultimately, on the healthcare side of what we're seeing in the Weathersfield region, just like every population that EMS, the medical services is dealing with right now, we have a very large elderly population. On top of that, we have a very large coverage area here in Weathersfield. Coming from Clermont to get to probably the most distant location within the town of Weathersfield can take us up to 34, 35 minutes. So as a firefighter, whether you're on whichever station you may work out of, you have that requirement and that, you have to have that tenacity to maintain the situation, keep it calm, until that ambulance can get there. It's, you take a weather night like tonight, it could take us 40 minutes to get to some locations on 106 coming from Clermont. I'm not here to speak on behalf of that ambulance service, but I do get that unique perspective as Josh just mentioned. So all of these things that we're asking for and the things that we're trying to get approved ultimately come down to, it's the welfare and the care of us, not just the Select Board, not the fire department, but the community. We have a very, very large community to serve. And I just, that's really the only point I wanted to bring to the board is, we just need to make sure we understand, we're doing everything we can and any support we can get is very much appreciated.
Questions?
Thanks, Josh and Jeremy.
Thank you, guys. Questions?
I really appreciate the kind of specificity and kind of scope of the work, right? Because it's, again, just like, at least it's kind of invisible when you're living in, you get to live in, it's a lot.
Mm-hmm. Rika?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Dave?
Well, I saw, you know, that the stipends have changed, so I, I have a lot of I don't know in my mind, and one of them will, but it's got to be certainly run by the treasurer, Steve Hyer. I don't know the answer to it, so you'd have to ask him, or Brandon can. And then how, and how does, how does that work, or it works the model, or I don't, I don't pretend to want to hear that answer tonight, but there's, there's got to be a method to what that is, and that's going to create work. How does that affect the status of the nonprofit organizations? If, if they still need to be nonprofits, I don't know the answer to that. I actually think, in a strange way, that joining this together, but yet still having two houses creates more work. And the reason it creates more work is you still have to identify all those expenses in each house, in each section, and then combine it onto one piece of paper, and then when they're one question, you've got to go back to the other one to refer to. It's going to create more administration.
I totally understand, I understand that statement, but it comes down to the piece of equipment, just like the highway department, we have, we have a lot of equipment and we budget for each piece of equipment separately when we build our equipment line item, which is like double the fire department line item. So like, you see the number, but to develop that number, you start from zero each year, and then you build it from zero up based on what you need or think you need for the next year and the maintenance of the trucks and so forth.
I didn't get anywhere near that deep, though. I didn't have to. The last thing is that, you know, as these evolve, and I listened to, you know, the most frustrating thing is for all the emergency services, including police, are, is someone at some moment says 911. And then it is, I don't know where to draw the line or if the line can be drawn, where, what is the lowest service? And I heard you say, Josh, that you just go to them all, because I've heard several in the years past where it's extremely costly and frustrating to listen to someone say 911, which is an emergency, and then at the end of the day, it's, no, I really didn't mean it, because it's because you guys do the best you can and knock yourself out to go there, and then Golden Cross has to turn around and go back and non-transport. And it's, so it becomes a non-911 event. On the other hand, you do get the ones that are like, really, you know.
To be honest, with the population that we deal with over here, it's not much different than the other towns that I do get to observe. It's roughly 10 to 15%, sometimes a little bit higher, where it, somebody fell and then a family member was able to get them up and they needed literally no response by the time we got there. So yes, that does happen. But I can also say that on the other hand, where it comes in as a basic, I fell down and I'm not hurt, and I've shown up and it's been one of the worst calls that I've ever seen because things evolved while I was responding. So I understand, yes, there are a lot of calls where I walk in and I'm like...
What did I come for?
Yeah, exactly. But then again, that time that we play Cry Wolf and we don't come is the time that something bad happens. So I understand that concern, and of that 520 that Josh mentioned, I'm sure there were some of those in there. I'm not going to try to give you a number, but I'm sure there were some of those in there. But at the same time, it's, we don't get to choose which addresses we go to, we don't get to choose which calls we go to. I can tell you there are some frequent flyers here in town, that's not for me to point out. Some of them were necessary, some of them weren't, but it's still our job to respond when 911 is pushed.
As, you know, we, we have a lot of, we see folks at, at times in their life when, when they might be declining and, and needing extra help to get up and, and do some of the things that they do. And when we look at the medical care system as a whole, we're, we're not doing a great job as a society, and that's, and that's where we're seeing it at a local level, is when we're responding to these incidents and, and folks are just in a position where they don't have any other options other than to call us. We're happy to do that, but to your point, Dave, it is costly and that's a service we're providing to the town. As we look to the future, we, we should be trying to determine what we want to provide for services, because there's a, there's a wide range we can go, right? The town of Hartford, for example, just hired a community nurse, and to my understanding, that position is, is going to be full-time and is going to reach out to people after ambulance calls if they've been transported, make sure that they got the medications they needed, make sure that they know their appointments are upcoming. And that's a service that the town of Hartford, you know, feels is, is valued, and that's the direction they're going. Burlington has done some things to mitigate the drug, the drug problems with off-duty fire personnel, bringing them in for extra shifts to, to be more proactive. We are seeing an increase in, in drug calls in town, overdoses. So we do need to look at that as we move forward, and we can go a couple of different directions. But at this point, when the pager goes off, we're expected to go, and the person on the other end expects professionals to show up. That's the bottom line for where we are now. Mr. Folter, you bring up some really good points about the stipend. The town manager has, has really supported this, and there, there are some unanswered questions. There are two separate nonprofits. There are questions about deeds for properties or leases. The Scottney Firehouse sits on a state lease, I believe it was a 99-year lease. The West Weathersfield Fire Department sits on a deeded piece of property that is to support the volunteer fire department, if I understand correctly. I'm getting a nod from Dave, so...
Well, here's the really, so I'll help you, because you can take advantage of it while people are still living. Dean Adams was the executor to the will to the Robinson family that donated the ground underneath the West Weathersfield Fire Station from the NITCA law offices in Ludlow. It might be worth it to look all that up, like, because really important information while people are still with us, that could answer your question. But I know that, that, that family donated the ground underneath to support fire services. So that's all good news.
Yeah.
But, but I'm just pointing that out. So here's where I'm going to go with the whole fire services. You know, I've made it pretty clear that I'm not going to run again because I've run my whole life here, serving the town, but on the way out, I would say this. And I've talked to Steve Hyer, actually, about it upstairs a little bit, and he has had years of experience on the school board. He said what you ought to do is name a date, and I'll just throw this out there, of March of 2026, where the town would then take up the, entertain the idea of having another something to do with the fire services. That puts everybody on notice about for like, a lot of time, so that you don't hear anybody crying that they didn't hear and they didn't know and they didn't do anything. So you actually make the end date before you start.
So if I may, part of the conversation was, our current contract expires June, June of 25, as the town manager mentioned, with an automatic renewal of a year if we don't, if we don't make alterations, I believe is the wording. So there was already a conversation of, of potentially July 1, 26 to take action.
26 or 25?
To do that one-year renewal.
Oh, okay.
Potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we have slowed down. We want to make sure we do this right. Recruitment and retention, as I mentioned to, to you during the police chief's time, is a huge issue across the board. We're seeing, we're seeing departments struggle everywhere. It's across the country. It's not just Weathersfield, it's not just Vermont. We want to hold on to the good folks that we have, and part of the stipends for that is, you know, I've always said, I'm not really looking for money personally, but it would be nice if it didn't cost me money, was, was what I've always said. However, as we look forward and everyone is, is seeing higher costs of living and they are giving up their time, you know, potentially, you know, for firefighter one, for example, that's, that's roughly a 200-hour course that we're asking people to take when they join the fire department. So 200 hours, give that up in a year from your family to volunteer. We should be looking to the future and trying to keep people involved, and, and there are folks that, on, on both organizations, that a small stipend would impact their life at the end of the year. So I, I would leave you with that on the stipend piece. And then, is there any other fire, fire-related questions at this time?
I'm kind of curious how often you respond to situations where you do have to wait for police, like Chief was describing, like, how frequent is it that we're running into the floor where firefighters might be in danger?
I could, I, all I could do is give you an educated guess. I don't have actual data on that, but I would say it's probably an average of, of once a week we're encountering challenges with mental health or overdose. We are working on, I have a training organized for January with state police and their HCRS liaison to discuss what's going on behind the scenes on whether we're asked to stage or, or go in without PD response and kind of what, what their metrics are to determine how we should be responding. But it, but it is a challenge, and state police, since they went to their, their like central barracks, now the Westminster barracks covers everything from Whitingham to the Heartland Town Line. Town Line. So they could be, you know, an hour and a half away, essentially, depending upon road conditions, which, which also makes it challenging.
On the medical side, generally, what our biggest concerns with are obviously, yes, the possibility of a violent patient, but also when we have a death circumstance. There has been times where I've had to wait up to 45 minutes to get an officer on scene, basically leaving myself, my truck, my crew out of service, waiting for state police to show up, because I need to have a death investigator, and our chief wasn't on. So again, but I'm not, that doesn't happen every day, but these are circumstances where you ask when we're running into those circumstances about being...
Those are the circumstances where the violent patients or the death, where we can be caused to lose more time.
Brandon, I do have questions on the history of the sort of municipal movement, but I guess that probably is not right now, is what you were saying.
I, I wouldn't...
I remember the vote.
Yep.
But I don't, I don't have the context in between our, at this point.
Now, so I gave a little bit of context with the contracts. What, could you elaborate a little bit, Nate?
Well, no, just yes.
Okay.
That was just an...
Um, so how we got here is, in 2019, select board voted for a municipal fire department. And then that budget was voted down. There was a lot of differences of opinion back in 2019 on whether we should have volunteer fire department or a municipal fire department.
There was an official request that was typed up, requesting that the select board form a municipal fire department with one fire chief. And at that time, it was also stated that the West Weathersfield Fire Department would hand over all of the assets that they had purchased through fundraising, and it would all be town assets. There are a lot of town assets, and there are a lot of assets that were purchased by the associations to support the town. At the end of the day, we're still trying to help the people, but that was, that was a sticking point for some, so that was, that was included at that time. The cause for that was the years and years of animosity between the two fire departments. The town manager has, it, it's a sight to see, Mr. Todd can say, to have all of us sitting on the same side of the table, working together, or even to have two of us standing at the same podium, sharing a microphone before you. These are, these are big steps. But that, that was the history of how we, we got there, and at the time, the board, board felt that, I believe it was a three-to-vote, we could look back and find out.
It was a unanimous vote, I thought.
I did not think it was. I could be wrong.
The...
It doesn't make any difference.
So, so after that, I came in in 2020. I was hired in December of 2019, and then came in in 2020, and I was told that we needed to develop a fire department contract. So we, I wrote a fire department contract, and then we began, and basically what that contract did was, it pulled in all the finance before the town would write a check to the departments, and then that money would be spent to operate both fire departments. Whereas instead, now, what, what happens is all the bills come to the town to be paid, and we account for everything. We pulled in a history of their books into our software, so we had, I think, five years of history that was pulled into our software when we did that. And then we created a contract that basically, as far as you can go municipal without being municipal.
So what, I guess what I'm kind of curious is, because I, I mean, I understand that the historic history, but I don't know, I don't agree with it. What, where, where does the advantage come with this select board decision to moving a municipal fire department, and why, if that decision was made, why aren't we there yet, I guess? And that's not a, that's not a judgment, that's a curiosity, as to, that's what I mean, sort of the history, why, why are we right here, kind of, with that pathway?
So it, it takes some time, like, there's been, there've been volunteer fire departments for a very long time. There were some differences in opinion, but we were able to find mutual agreement in the contract. And the contract really did, it improved, it improved things. And right now, we're, we're working together to try to figure out if we can become one fire department. And we're working together to do that. We haven't, the fire department task force has not voted yet to do that. We want to collect feedback from both fire departments and incorporate that feedback into any transitional plan that we develop.
One fire department, a municipal fire department versus one department under the 501C?
It would, it would be one fire department. At that point, the town manager per statute would, would appoint a fire chief.
Which would make it a municipal fire department.
Correct. And then from there, appointments would, would be made.
Let me take a swing at that, Nate, for you. Part of the problem has been, like, both fire departments spent years fundraising, and then they bought things.
There you go.
And then they said they owned them. That's been resolved. The town, and should, own all the things in the house, because they're insured and everything, and then they don't need to send them out fundraising, looking for money to do some stuff, because it's, that's the burden of the town. However, since any member of the both fire departments haven't been paid, that they truly are volunteers, and that means that the town really should not have, I don't think, say in the operations, because that's a line that I don't think the town should cross. And so when the town voted on a chief, that package was also included, that the board, not some fire commission, was going to then hire a chief with a package of $100,000. So it opened the door to payments for labor. But I, I don't know, I don't know as it should go down that road, because quite frankly, none of us up here are experts in what they do. They are.
Experts? I'm not even a rookie!
Yeah, we're not even like a novice. So that is, that is the complication. The complication is that we don't know what we're doing, and it's our job to kind of like roll out money, and then draw the line at everything you try to do to put together the town to work for a reasonable tax rate.
Even more so, not only, I don't know what they're, I don't know what they're doing.
No, I know, but...
Clueless.
Well, that was the premise, and you all just didn't understand, right?
Right.
So that's just it kind of in a nutshell. So I don't know where it would go, again, things change, and the calls are changing. We're actually, I'm sure they'll answer the same question, we're seeing like less fire and a lot more complications with human life.
I, I think what Brandon was saying at this point is, the select board prior to us created the municipal department, and the actions have never moved forward to put that in place. The article in 2019 was voted down to hire a municipal chief. The, the two things I said that I didn't see was, first of all, the, the actual administrative structure or the financial structure that went along with either of the, any of that decision. So there was, there was no operational structure, there was nothing, even financial. So that was, that was, there were, there were, there was a vote somewhere that Dave and I were, were voted together, and that was the three-to-two vote, but I don't believe that was the one that created the municipal department. That happened before I was on the board. The, the work that's being done by the departments and the, and the, and the town manager that is, is bringing things to, together, but statutorily, because the select board voted to create a municipal department, if these two departments vote to create one department, the responsibility falls on him, not us, to hire, to hire somebody. We would end up with a budget. That's where we, that's where we say yay or nay.
Well, and that's where it becomes confusing, if the town has voted on that and said no. That, that's, right, that was my understanding?
So they, they voted down that particular budget, and quite frankly, I would have probably voted no too. It, it wouldn't make sense to have a paid fire chief and no paid staff. I mean, that, how would you operate? So you're going to be a paid fire chief and, and everybody else is going to be volunteer? Like, so what, this, this particular budget could, I could appoint a fire chief and give him a $5,000 stipend, for example, or a $10,000 stipend, and then we could take the other $10,000, and, and then we could break that down into stipends for others.
Is that the intention of the stipend? All right, because...
It's, it's...
That's why, that's some of the questions around the stipend.
That's an option.
Look, they were saying, right, it's a volunteer department, but you don't have the whole of the operations.
We do actually explain the operations within the contract. So the contract, and I can send that over to the whole board, so that you guys have the most recent contract.
This might be a longer...
Yeah, this is...
It's probably way more complicated than I...
You know, we, I, I don't think we really need to like go down any of those roads anytime soon. Like, we have a lot of work together to do.
If we go that far, to get to the, whatever the March 26 date, I guarantee you that the board in place would probably amend that vote, or to create a policy that would deal with it. I don't see, I don't see a select board allowing a town manager to kind of like do what they want to do, even if it's statute, because the policy would be in Weathersfield about what the fire, how the fire department would act.
There's not one for police, there's not one for any other department. Why, why are we targeting fire?
I don't think we're targeting anybody.
That's what it sounds like. So there's a policy for fire, but no other town staff?
The department head with employees underneath, and the department head should be able to run their department.
Absolutely. So, so statute, statute says...
Wait, wait.
Statute says the town manager is actually, it, it says, the manager shall have the authority and shall be his or her duty by law to have charge control and supervision of the fire department, if any, which there is, because it was created in 2019, and shall appoint, fix the compensation of, and may remove all officers and employees thereof.
The board could choose to, to, to say that they really don't have a fire department, that it has like a semi.
It could.
You know, you can make words up all over the place.
But if you make a policy for the fire department, I, I think it would be, I think it would be unequal. It would have to have a policy for all.
And two things would happen. First of all, this board, when he sets the compensation at whatever it is, this board has to approve that budget, and then send it to the voters, and they have to approve it too. So just because he fixes a budget and, and says he's going to hire this person, there's, there's two levels that could still say no.
Then you can get out of both of them. So I'm going to suggest that maybe this is a different discussion.
Yes.
Than what I was, right, than...
We're way past mid...
Where we came.
So...
It is?
Yeah.
Yes, Josh?
I would, I would encourage any and all board members to visit the fire stations on a Tuesday night. Make sure we're there, but come visit, ask questions, see what you have for equipment, meet some of the personnel, you know, Mr. Todd, Mr. Fuller, we've, a lot of us have interacted. I, I haven't really met you folks before, coming to a few meetings this, this summer. So it, it would be great to see you in the firehouse and, you know, show you firsthand some of the things we're dealing with, and, and some of the things we have, some of the tools we have, and, and the specialized training we have. The only other thing I would say before I step away is, does Mr. Murray have any questions while we are here from the budget perspective?
August, do you have any questions?
No, I, I don't have any questions at this time. I, I do want to thank Brandon again for keeping the budget committee well informed. We'll meet next week, we'll do the budget review, and if questions arise or concerns arise, we'll submit them. And thank you for, for the time.
Thank you as well, sir. Any other questions for the fire department or Brandon?
I just appreciate it, guys, yeah?
No, thank, thank you. We, we appreciate the time.
Thank you, stay safe.
Drive slow tonight. I don't know that there's an option in that.
All right, so we're, we're still on the budget, that was just those...
Yep.
Why don't we get on with the agenda, because it's like nine o'clock.
So, I, I just have a quick update. Ricker and I attended the transfer station committee meeting. So we met with Wes Windsor and Reading, and we decided, we reviewed the budget, and everybody, all the towns are okay with the transfer station budget. The only amendment that we had at that time is to change the deficit repayment from seven years to five years.
Other ways?
Excuse me, sorry. Five years to seven years. So what it did, and then we'll reevaluate that next year, because we do anticipate with the payoff of the compactor to end in a surplus this year, which will reduce the deficit, and we don't know by how much, especially with our increase in punch tickets. So we entered a seven-year repayment of the deficit into the budget, which decreased it down to 29,000. And then it decreased the percent increase. So that's the only change that was made to the transfer station budget in, in all three towns.
29,000 a year, or a half?
Yeah, split between three towns, so. And then it, it does, it serves its purpose, it'll reduce the deficit, and then we'll reevaluate it again next year and determine if we want to shorten the repayment or not, so.
I have a, I'm on the phone with Dave, a question, that's all right. Is the...
Oh, no. Can I leave? No, just kidding. I'm just messing, Dave.
Is there any...
Yes. That, we actually met with, who was the person, were you in the office, Olivia, when she came?
Yeah, I can't remember any of the connections today.
And there was some misinformation presented to us over the weekend, and we dealt with that today. And hopefully, things are smoother going forward, but we were never notified that anybody... So we, basically in a nutshell, somebody said that the town didn't answer the phone to give punch tickets. So we searched our call log on all numbers that would have called us, and there was no number. So we figured out the problem, and, and now they have punch tickets, so, yeah, sorry.
I got two questions, and it's getting late, but if you're going to, are we going to just move on or mush on or no? Because you raised, is the alleged budget, alleged, I'm...
Alleged? It's a crime!
Gone from, going to $65 from $50?
Uh, no, so...
Okay, good.
Uh, real quick, the punch, uh, the permit sticker would go from 50... to 58.
Okay, so my next question, and I don't know that I'm on board with that, my next question is...
The only, the only alternative is to continue accumulating a deficit, Dave, so...
Nope, it's not.
It is.
No, I disagree, and here's why.
That's what, that's what I've been doing for five years, and...
I disagree.
I'm going to continue arguing this time, so...
All right. I'm going to let Mr. Fuller have the floor for a moment.
I made a specific motion a couple of months ago, in fact, it got kind of displaced by a month or two to take in effect, which raised the punch tickets by 12% up to $5. I'd really like to see how that's going to play out on an annual basis, because that's going to, it has to affect the bottom line. Anytime you increase the revenue 12%, there are so many tickets that are punched, that it's got to be significant, and that has to address the deficit.
So...
Now he's going to answer.
Okay. I wish, I wish it did, I really do. And I, so what that, what that did was, if we punched 30, 42,000 punches a year, which is right around what we punch, is it would generate 31,000 a year.
Hold on.
Yep. So 0.75 times 42,000... Yep. So 0.75 times 42,000 punches would generate 31,000.
So that's making a pretty good dent in the deficit.
Okay, let him continue with his answer.
But then, and you, you talked to Mr. Priestley, um, and he got upset because I didn't pay him on time. Um, a new contract went into effect six months early, which is why I withheld payment for a couple of months until I could review our variable revenue and expenses and determine whether to sign the contract. Um, and that increased the pull, the cost per pull, and the cost per ton by $15, per pull, per ton, which then ate up that 31,000. And the la, in Q1, I showed that revenues were behind expenses, um, by 2%. And we expect that to, we expect that to change throughout the year, but it's not going to be substantial enough to get rid of the deficit. Um, so I think we need to raise the punch ticket to at least $58 and keep this deficit repayment in the budget. And then next year we'll reevaluate, because there's no way that we're going to go over enough to pay off the full deficit next year. So we, we reevaluate next year, and then maybe we adjust, um, the deficit repayment plan.
We're not going to raise the punch ticket to $58, because that's what I heard. You said punch ticket.
Uh, permit sticker, I'm sorry, Dave.
You said, because I'm pretty sharp with the ears at nine o'clock still.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I also got told that we are the most efficient and the well-run.
We are.
And you can nail me to the cross by saying that I happen to have a conversation with Mr. Priestley, that's fine. But, but here's the good side. He said of the 10 towns that he actually, um, is involved with, that we are the best run and we're the cheapest.
Yep.
That's.
We are.
That's good to hear. Um, here's why I don't support raising the, um, sticker fee to $58. Because we don't really have, first of all, Reading and Brownsville don't spread that over the entire number of parcels of their towns. They sell them to the people that use the facility.
No, they don't.
The curbsides don't? They pay?
So Reading puts, they both put the entire allocation into their general fund budget as a line item.
Because we have people in Weathersfield here, and a significant amount, that just have curbside, that never go to the transfer station.
That's true in every town.
I know, but so asking them to keep paying more and more on a sticker fee, they're paying for a sticker and they could go out to dinner and not use the transfer station.
I really think that this budget.
Okay, hold on, one at a time.
So I, I've come forward since 2020 with a plan to keep the, we need to end the budget at zero each year. And every time I come forward with the solution that's going to fix the budget, the board changes the recommendation, and now we have a $212,000 deficit. We need to, we need to do this budget this year.
I, I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's a fair charge at all, because I think this board's trying to address that, and so am I, and making the motion to pay entirely for the compactor was a big step, because.
It was.
In fact, Priestley told me that. That's a big move to pay down your debt. But I would favor, and this is just an option, because you're going to these meetings, and then you're making these deals, and then you come back to us thinking that, okay, that is like, just to support me. And I want to, but the, the users should be paying for the service. We may have to go to $6 for the punch ticket, but I think it's a little unfair to ask the, um, persons that don't use the facility to keep going up on their tax bill.
I, I just, I disagree with that, and here's why. Um, in, in the survey that I did, um, people responded to the survey by saying, and you've used this before, Dave, that, um, they want this transfer station to stay in place and continue to operate. And just like anything else that would, you know, that's not a vote, but if it, if it were, or if anything went to a vote, some say yea, some say nay, and the, the majority rules. And the, the tax bill goes out and everybody pays, you know, whether it's buying a truck, or, or buying a police car, or supporting the budget. Um, the people in the town will have the ultimate, uh, responsibility of accepting the budget and, and giving us their feedback about, you know, whether this is what we should be doing or not doing, or we should be finding another, another route to, to take care of this. So I, I disagree on, on all of those points.
But, but we're talking about the actual users. So if you, if you were, um, having to, let's say, let's say in your life, you got charged to, to use a boat, and you didn't have a boat in your life, you, you would question yourself about why you would want a boat.
You can make that same argument against a school, against a police department, against a fire department, against any department.
I don't have a driver's license. Why am I paying for roads and highway?
I don't know that you are.
So, I, I have a question though. Do, I mean, it's going to sound like it's not related, but it sure is.
Yep.
What percentage of our town, uh, is eligible for the home state or assistance, whatever? You know, where income sensitivity and the, the tax rate, do you know that roughly?
No, I, I. I can get it.
I think they've changed the criteria every, they move it every year.
My thinking in asking the question is, right, if you raise the sticker price, everybody gets that increased eight bucks, right?
Yep.
If you add it to the, it just says the line in the budget, right?
Yes.
Then all of a sudden it gets applied to the income sensitivity or, uh, it just is a different, same, it's in dollars, putting the same sort of people. Uh, it just spreads differently, right?
So, that's what Springfield does. Um, they put it, they, they budget for a deficit every year. And then whatever the budget lands, like if it lands in a deficit of 30,000, then the general fund transfers 30,000. In our budget, it's a little different, because we share the transfer station with three towns. So we need to put the deficit repayment into the fixed allocation formula in order for the deficit to be fairly split between the three towns.
I'm not understanding how people can't see my point, because it's the actual users that do it. And like I said, hey, I'm saying that maybe the ticket has to be six bucks, but for those persons to be charged that don't use the service, I find that kind of really weird. I don't buy grain that I don't use. Um, that's all, that's all I'm saying. That, that, that you may, I didn't say not have the money. I didn't say that. I said that, 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 you, you just told me that, what is it, 42,000 punches amongst the three towns? Talk about being equal. It's the persons that use it.
$5 a punch is already, I mean, you know, you keep going up on the punch ticket, you're going to, it's going to be a whole town problem, because there's going to be trash everywhere.
Well, the, or the other option is people are going to look at the cost of the, the, the sticker on the truck, or whatever they use their car, which is going up $8. Um, and then the sticker went up to five, and how, how many, how many punch tickets am I buying or using a month? And is it cheaper for me to just opt out of that and, and hire Alva or whoever to put, put a dumpster or, or pick up service at the end of my driveway? And, and now they're not buying dump sticker punch tickets at all. Um, at what point does that start to become a problem, Ray?
But they're still using recycling for the street.
Yeah.
And, and.
I think that's like a, a totally, I mean, I have curbside pickup in Springfield, so I use Alva Way, so they come pick it up. But I also use the transfer station probably twice a month. Um, because, I mean, Natalia and I, I mean, we, we do construction at the house and so forth, and we go use the Springfield transfer station, and they also have free recycling. Um, so I think, I think our program's good. I think our transfer station is operating very efficiently. I think we have a deficit problem right now, which is 202,000.
And we can, and we can disagree on.
I don't want to increase the punch, I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news and say, hey, we need to increase the punch ticket by eight bucks, but at this point.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you said punch ticket again.
Sticker, this, I'm sorry. I'd, I'd hate to be the bearer of bad news and say, let's increase the permit sticker by eight bucks.
I can answer your question, Mike, because it's $65 a month for the dumpster. So you factor in the gas that you go to the transfer station, the bag or two that you drop off, all that stuff, and you come up, because they're doing it right now, curbside, $65 a month, to get a dumpster in your yard. There are neighbors right around me, they're doing, I asked the question the other day, right out of the blue. That's the answer.
$65 a month?
A month.
Okay. Rika?
They're doing it.
One of the things that, um, Brandon and I have talked about, or started to talk about, but not in great detail yet, is the possibility of instituting a program where instead of going single stream, which is basically a, you know, just a, a hole, you know, there's, there's no money coming back from that, because there's no market for recyclables, to going to a program where materials are sorted, where you have people sorting it. And the example is Walpole, New Hampshire, which manages to recover on the order of 85% of the cost of their recycling program. Um, it would be another way of reducing the deficit and not having to increase the charge for, um, you know, for either stickers or, or punch cards. Um, it's, it largely hasn't, so the first step in that process would be to have this fellow come and just assess what's our current operation. I know I've brought this up before, but I think it's, it bears looking into, because it is another possible route for, you know, expenses are going up everywhere on all fronts, and I think it behooves us to, to look at other possible solutions for, um, in this case, recouping some of, some of our, um, exp, yes, you know, covering some of our costs.
And, and, and I, I think that that's, um, all well and good as, as a goal, uh, but I don't think the goal fits the current budget, um, discussion as far as.
Correct.
You know, it, it's not going to happen.
It's not something that's going to get implemented.
By the time we need it for this budget.
Right, right.
Yeah. Another reason why increasing the punch ticket, I got it right this time.
No, you didn't. You said punch ticket again.
The punch, no, I'm going, I'm going by what Dave was saying, like, let's put the cost on the user, and let's increase the punch ticket even further. The deficit repayment, or any repayment, is not a variable expense. This is a fixed expense. So fixed revenue covers fixed expenses, and fixed revenue is permit sticker revenue. Um, the loan for the compactor was paid for through fixed revenue sources, which are the allocations between all three towns. Um, and in order to share it equally, it needs to be a fixed expense covered by a fixed revenue. If it's variable, we can't put our finger on when or how the deficit's going to be repaid. Um, and last year, instead of continuing to argue for the approach that I had proposed, it sounded like a good idea to just do the 75 cents at that point. Um, like, it would, it would do, it would do something, which was better than nothing. Um, this solves the problem and stabilizes the transfer station so that it can land in a net zero, which is consistent with an enterprise fund. Um, we can't keep operating in a six-figure deficit.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
I know, I would, I would support an increase in the sticker price. I did hear you, Dave. Um, that's just, that's where I am.
Um, does this take in consideration the ongoing increases that Alva would be having to make with the, um, the only landfill that we have in the state, which is Comontree? So when you say, I'd be very careful about saying that we're, this will fix the deficit, because I am certain that their rates are going to go up by 10% or whatever. So, you know, at any time, this, they run the show. They tell, they tell, the only other alternative for landfill is Albany, New York.
And that's the frustrating thing with this transfer station budget. But see, what, as you fail, you continue to learn. Um, so what I do now is I break it down by pull, by ton for MSW, CND, recycling, and glass. And I break it down and look at our trends per month over the past 36 months, and then I factor it in the anticipated increase into this budget for our variable expenses. Um, and I believe that the $5 per punch will cover the cost of anticipated increases in FY26.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Um, any other questions on the budget at this time?
I just got one quick question.
Go ahead.
On the highway one. Did I understand you say that you weren't replacing a person that was retiring?
It was like that.
Oh, I thought that that's what you said. Okay. You are replacing that person then?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, no, I know what you said, no.
It sounded that the last time when you spoke.
The only thing we talked about was insurance, health insurance, with, with, we put in for a family plan instead of putting in for what they had for insurance, because we don't know who we're going to hire. That was the only thing we had for discussion on the budget.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
All set with the budgets? Not all set with the budgets. I thought you wanted to move on.
I do have two questions.
Of course.
Maybe I'll give you one.
Is the, in the highway budget, and I don't need to pull it up, because I don't want to drag it out, but is the highway budget, does it have paving as a line item?
Yes.
Did that line increase significantly over FY25?
Well, we had a, we had a repayment for the Weathersfield Center Road, and then we also did a pavement management plan. So we shifted the money, because that loan matures over to the pavement line item, to prevent future borrowing and interest.
Didn't answer my question. In, in the FY26 budget.
Yep.
Did it, the paving line, I don't even have it up, I don't need to.
I have it up.
Because the next question's going to be, did the equipment? Because I remember listening to Ray, I don't agree with the philosophy of doing this, because of the, the boards need, and the management needs to understand that you need to compare operations budgets over year over year to make it equal. The moment that you start inserting reserve kind of articles within the annual budgets, it makes for really confusion for future.
Yeah, we're not, we're not entering, oh, I, I see what you're saying, Dave, yes.
Yes.
So if you, if you go at the bottom of the budget, we did, which I think is more, in my opinion, more transparent, um, we have fund balance. So, we put 50,000 in fund balance as a revenue, and then the town, when it votes on the budget, transfers 50,000 to reserves. I thought, you know, because the way that we've been doing it, and Steve Hire doesn't complain about it, but he's like, you know, what happens is, when the board votes, like, say it voted right now, um, to transfer 50,000 to the highway capital maintenance reserves and equipment reserves, what looked, what it looks like on our books is that we run a deficit of 50,000, because we didn't budget for that 50,000. Um, and although it's caught in fund balance, um, it still doesn't look like that. Like, if you look in the audit, it looks like a deficit, 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 but we have fund balance, so it's like this confusing thing when you look at our books. This is like a very clean way of transferring the money to reserves.
I'm just telling you.
Without a special article.
It unfairly says that the highway budget is going up 7.2, because you're using the fund balance absorbed from the prior year to help out. I don't, I don't think that's fair to the highway budget. I think it should be, I think that percentage should be less. I think we should be transferring those monies over, and because it's not absorbed by the next year's tax rate, it's already there.
I could create a separate budget for this transfer.
I don't know, I'm just saying that. That's one of them questions.
The tax, the tax need is going up 2.4%, I thought, so we want to.
Yeah, 3%.
Like you said.
I know, so that's unfair.
But if you look at the highway tax revenue, which is the, the top line, that's the transparency of the budget. It's, the tax need is 3%. Then we have these other revenue sources. Um, and one of them is very specific. It says use of fund balance. Um, and that use of fund balance is 75,000.
So was one of them, you said, for the, uh, equipment reserve, one for paving to transfer, and the other was for equipment? Did I hear that? Did I hear that? No.
There's two, we only have two reserve accounts, one is for equipment and one is for capital improvements.
Yeah, so twenty-five thousand into each.
So there's no significant increase in paving in the budget, in the annual budget?
Yeah, that would be fifteen thousand dollar increase, wouldn't it?
No, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand dollar increase.
So if you look in our debt service, our paving, debt service paving goes down thirty-eight thousand. And then our paving line item goes up thirty-nine thousand. So they're both paving, it's just, why pay interest? Like, if you accumulate the interest, why are we using tax dollars to pay the bank? It doesn't...
I'm not following, but I don't have to. So the grand list...
You asked the question.
Yeah, but I'm not following the answer because I don't know where that came from. I don't, I don't know, we're not talking about borrowing and interest payments and whatever. I was talking about, were monies going to be inserted in the annual presentation of the budget that were always done by special article? Or votes by this board at the end of the year after we received the audit to make sure that it got transferred? That's really clean. So all you're doing is...
I see what you're saying there.
You're using it into the future.
So what you could theoretically do instead of this is you could use seventy-five thousand in fund balance, not make any reserve transfers, and then do two special articles for twenty-five thousand apiece. That would accomplish the same goal.
What I'm trying to get to is for the future boards, when they compare year-over-year budgets, just like you did here before when you showed like ten years back about what they're doing, that's all. So you can't have one year where you've got, oh yeah, by the way, we had a surplus of a hundred thousand and we used it, and that's why there was a big hiccup in that year. It's just cleaner for boards to see. My next question is, when you disclose what the grand list was, is that the most current year's grand list that we just got?
FY25.
Just happened?
Yeah, the one that we're currently operating in.
So you don't need to answer it tonight, did it move? Did it get helped by the CLA, did all that crap?
Oh, the CLA hasn't come out yet. So that's, so that's why, I don't have that information yet. So if you go to like, if you go to this line here...
The grand list?
Well, he's still talking, trying to explain it to you.
Well, I announced the grand list that we're currently operating in, which is FY25. So that's what we do every year. We don't know the grand list until like June, actually, excuse me, April 4th. And then the select board says the tax rate on first, second week of July. No, I don't have the homestead and non-homestead rates, do you?
So...
We're gonna close out on budgets and move on.
So when you, so the three, five, three, is that a combined estimate of the general fund and highway?
That's all funds and all articles.
Highway and general?
Local education, county tax, special articles, yeah.
Okay, good. I'm done.
Which is what you...
Yes. I just wanted to know because it wasn't really clear when it just says, I just wanted to know if it was all the general fund and not solid waste because that's a different animal.
When we first started, this was like six and a half cents, and your challenge was half of that. So that's where we're at.
My challenge?
I thought you said two cents.
I thought he said three and a half.
Who did more than two cents, I can tell you that.
He did say two cents, and I was like, well, can we, I can...
He said he's gonna put his two cents worth in home.
Oh, I see.
No, he said he wanted it to be two percent. He thought it was six percent, he wanted it to be two percent.
And there's still a final sweep that will occur.
You've got a big broom?
Well, and there's still other numbers that are gonna come in, too.
Yeah, they're still moving, the budget evolves until January.
And it evolves after that because the state has stuff, they don't give us until March, April, May, that impacts that thing, but we're already done. It happens every year. It's frustrating, it's, I'll get out. I chose my words very carefully, thank you. All right, we're done with the budget. American Rescue Plan Act funding. Yes, sir, thank you very much, and thank you for your attention and patience tonight, and... Yeah.
See you later.
Yeah, hope you get in early, get some rest.
Motion to approve the Martin Hall Memorial Security Improvement Project, award the bid to Vermont Life Safety for a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty cents, nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents to ARPA funds. But I'm gonna, yeah, but I'm gonna say eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents out of the reserve fund from Martin Hall.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of money in two accounts there.
Okay, so motion's been made to allocate money for Martin Memorial Hall Security Improvements in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents from ARPA, eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three from the Martin Memorial Hall Reserve Account for a grand total of nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty cents. Do I hear a second to the motion? Motion's made, and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
I know there's two Martin Hall accounts, do you, are you able to identify?
Yeah, I would do it right from that reserve account there that you had mentioned.
But I don't know the name of it specifically, and I know that there are two.
Yeah, one of them's for maintenance and one of them is for like building changes type thing. It'd be the one that changes, does changes, right?
Is that all of our ARPA money now?
So I need another vote after.
Okay, let's not go too deep into that, Brandon, let's deal with the motion on the floor.
Uh, one second.
And then you'll have it. Try to keep the rabbit holes to a minimum tonight. Seems like we're trying to crawl out of one.
All right, so we have the Martin Memorial Hall Capital Maintenance and Improvements, and that has a balance of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty. And then we have the Martin Memorial Hall Reserve, which has zero dollars. Excuse me, can you take that out of Town Office Capital Improvements instead?
I've asked, one of them you just said has zero?
Yeah, that's the one that was dissolved from the Sullivan and Powers auditors.
Sullivan and...
I asked Steve about that, and he really wants to get that back to have those two accounts.
It was created by the voters, it never should have been allowed to be taken away.
Exactly.
Remember, we got him fired over that.
That was twenty, like eighteen or twenty-seventeen. So the Town Office Capital Improvements has twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents. That would be my recommended reserve to draw from, instead of the Martin Memorial Hall Reserve.
I don't care, but I'm just, you're ringing a bell on me saying that. I've had that conversation with Steve before, and he really would like to get that back where there are two, what Mike just said. But one is kinda like, if the trustees, for instance, if there's some broken windows, they can go to that account and they can get it gone. And then, but another one is a bigger repair, so I don't know...
But those were both reserve accounts created by the voters, and I don't believe that any audit company had the right to tell us we could not do that. They wanted to make their job easier and combine them into one account, is what they did. Anyway, without getting too much deeper into the history, where are we at on the article? Any more discussion on the motion?
Could you just amend it to be the Town Office Capital Reserve?
Yes.
So the motion will say eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents from the...
Martin Memorial Hall Capital Reserve Account, Town Office Capital Reserve.
Motion's made by Mr. Fuller. You're good with that?
Yep.
Second was Kelly, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Motion's been amended. Any further discussion on the motion?
Do you notice them, so that this goes underneath, so we're good for the ARPA funds?
Yep.
This is it, right?
I need one more motion after this, but this is pretty much.
Yep, yep.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Final ARPA allocations?
So there could be, like, what we're reconciled as is projects that are like ongoing, that could come under budget, some could go over a little bit. There could be a thousand, or five hundred, or three hundred dollars left. So we could either do one, hold a special meeting prior to the end of the year to allocate whatever that is, or the board could authorize me to spend that somehow before the end of the year. Okay, so that could be the motion. Whatever's remaining...
And whatever money's left over, leftover goes to food pay.
Leftover in the ARPA allocations. Correct? Do I hear a sec, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? I have a second. Nathan, second the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
There's two, see, there's one here in the scutney and then the one at the food shelf, right? So I just...
The one over at the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse?
I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing that out, I don't really know.
Okay.
What kind of money?
It could be zero, like, we could be completely accurate, but it could be a few hundred.
It's a blanket, in case there's a little fluff left over, that we don't have to come back here to deal with it, we've already dealt with it and it's gone.
Now, if it turns out to be like a number that's high, I'm gonna reach out to Mike and reach out to all of you and be like, hey, we have twenty thousand.
And I have a plan for how I'm gonna spend it.
Well, I mean, I guess I wouldn't go that far, but I would, but I'd like to, but I'd like to know if it was like even three or four, because I'm not sure, I don't know, I don't know the answer. And I have another idea, and I wish I had time to throw it out, but you beat me.
Sorry.
With that microphone.
Well, I won't say the microphone, but it's on line number, let me look on the ARPA funds.
We have a motion on the floor.
Line number one, that's where I would have gone, but...
We have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
All in, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse policy, second reading.
So moved.
I have nothing to say about it.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Did you say it was going to the second or third reading?
This, this is...
Going, okay. Have you had any, has the office had any comments on it, Brandon?
Nope.
Nothing, okay.
Um, well, I did have a discussion with somebody that raised some, I guess it wouldn't be, I think I talked to you about it, Brandon, it wouldn't actually happen here, right? It happened somewhere else?
Yes.
What we discussed, and that was, there are different levels of like 501(c)(3). In fact, they're not all 501(c)(3), it's like 501(c)(D)(E), whatever. There's different categories in that stuff. And when I think about that, the question that was posed actually made me think about the difference between like a snowmobile club that provides, that takes care of trails, maintains trails that people use for recreation, and they're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), or actually it's not, but it's close, whatever, versus somebody that is either like a food shelf or a clothing benefit that provides needs, like food and clothing, or heating fuel, or anything. So there's, I guess what I'm getting at is there might be a group that we need to consider that's providing life necessary needs as opposed to some things that people might want, like a snowmobile club or a snowmobile trail.
Where are you going with this, with the fees?
Yes, with the fees, exactly, thank you. But according to Brandon, that happens in a different time. I just want to make the board aware of that, you know, that conversation happened between me and a resident. And, but we will take that up at a different time because it doesn't have, it's not actually in this policy. That's in, the actual fees and stuff are set in a different place, not in this policy, so...
Isn't that like an administrative move, though? Somebody's gonna have to make a judgment to say you're a nonprofit, so you waive the fees or something?
Well, and what I was getting at was classifying those 501(c)(3)'s in that, so that you actually had some sort of roadmap you could look at and say, well, wait a minute, okay, that's a life need, or, yeah, it's not really, you know. Like, exercise is, it's good for you, but you don't need it to survive. You might need clothes and you might need food to survive, so...
But you could be naked and hungry.
Well... I'm not gonna comment on that. Didn't the cows get out?
You're gonna miss me.
We're gonna send them all to your barn.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to send, there is a motion on the floor to send the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse policy to the third reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Holiday schedule, I believe Christmas and New Year's, right?
Yeah, and I looked at the school holiday schedule, and then I compared it to our holiday schedule, but there's different, number one, there's differences, and then number two, there's, yeah, there's, I think we should deal with Christmas and New Year's and then take up the whole holiday schedule.
Christmas Eve?
When is Christmas, what day is it falling?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
It's weird this year because it's in the middle of the week.
And the first is on Wednesday as well, Dave?
Yeah.
So what do you want to do, Brandon?
I'm gonna pull up the calendar, I really...
I'm gonna propose what the school does. They pay us for the day before the holiday for each week. So we get Tuesday and Wednesday paid of each week. Those are what the full year-round employees get from school. It doesn't count all the other employees at the school because they're all on vacation. But people like us have to work.
What do you, what has normally been done, Brandon, before the town, before Christmas gets off or Christmas...
I guess I've had it pretty good because it's fallen like on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday since I've been here. This is the first time it's fallen on a Wednesday. So it's...
So what do they want, Thursday and Friday? Well, what does the staff want, have they made any suggestions?
I can't imagine anybody wanting Thursday and Friday when the holiday's on Wednesday.
You don't think so?
No. Well, they might want Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Well, yeah, I mean, the holiday...
Yeah, I think that's what she said, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
I'd hate to, I don't wanna close the town office for three days, which is kinda my, but at the same time, I understand people travel for Christmas.
Do we have a holiday schedule from last year, or not, I mean, that was created?
Yes.
And what does that say?
It's Christmas Day.
And that's it?
That's all we get?
The highway is not open on Friday anyway, so that's like...
Correct. So we created, a schedule was created and voted on, a schedule was created and voted upon to provide for the holiday, the twenty-fifth and the first.
Yeah.
Period. Do you want to do more? Are you recommending that?
I don't wanna do this every year because it's not gonna fall on a Wednesday every year, but I do think employees need work-life balance and time with their families. And I don't know if just having Wednesday is sufficient to be able to adequately celebrate Christmas Day. For example, I mean, I'm just gonna take myself out of it as a town manager and just as an employee.
You'll be here working anyway.
No, I, my family's in Massachusetts, and we plan to go to Massachusetts on Christmas Eve, so... But we also don't mind traveling back on Christmas Day and being at work on Thursday if necessary, but...
Personally, I'd be, if the budget can stand it, and the only person I could look to for that is you, I'd be fine with a half a day on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth off, and New Year's is the first. And that's basically it for me.
I agree with Kelly, she's in the school calendar.
I am too. I'm the opposite Grinch, I'm twenty-four, twenty-five through thirty-one, one.
Yeah, that's the way I feel. Day before, Christmas.
Sometimes, sometimes goodwill will overlook the voting on the budget.
What is your recommendation? Twenty-four, twenty-five, and one?
Thirty-one and one. Tuesday and Wednesday of each week. Thieves and the dates, so... That's what the school does.
The full day, and you're giving the full day?
Yeah.
Brandon, you okay with that?
Yep, that's sufficient for me and generous.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
We haven't, listen, you didn't hear my, when I offered that, you didn't hear my... We haven't, listen, listen, you didn't hear my, when I offered that, you didn't hear my, the second part of the sentence.
But the town manager has to be.
All right, let's get the cows back in the barn.
Do we need that in a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion because the, the policy, the, the, the annual, well, the budget and the policy was set for the 25th and the first, period. So you need a motion.
I'll make the motion, the school.
No, I want dates.
Sorry. The 24th, 25th, and the 31st and 1st.
As, 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 as full holiday?
As full holidays.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded to, uh, give the employees the 24th, the 25th, the 31st, and the first as full time off paid holiday, uh, for 2024. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. That's, okay. Holiday schedule. Town manager update. No, we're not going to do one of those tonight.
Just real quick. I just have like two things. Um, actually, I only have one thing. I'll see you guys on January 13th, 2025. Um, we do Christmas, I usually, we usually have a second meeting, and we distribute Christmas cards to everybody in town, to all town employees and select board members. Um, we'll be putting those in your mailbox this year. Um, so at some point between now and Christmas, we will put a Christmas card in your mailbox. Correct. So if you see an odd car full up, stick something in your mailbox.
What do I get? Coal? Probably.
We're going to go find some.
Yep.
It'll probably be. Box with white powder.
Yep.
Ta, ta.
I tried to pull it together today. I, I, we tried to pull it together today, but it wasn't possible, so.
Okay.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Future agenda items. Um.
Nothing.
There's one on there that we probably ought to just touch on, and that's number E, where it says special meetings if needed, uh, obviously for the budget. Um, you know, we got, we have to have this done by a certain time, and if we don't expect to have that looking at you with dates on it, that we will have special meetings to get through the budget because we have to. Appointments?
But that would be January, right? Not 12, 10, 11, 12?
Well, we'll see.
No, we're not going to meet like tomorrow, right?
Could be.
Okay.
It'd be, it would be an emergency meeting if we need to, but I don't, I don't see that happening. I do not see, I do not see that happening this week. I'm just giving you guys, I put that on. I told you. That's a good one, huh? All right. So everybody's aware. Appointments. Nothing on appointments. Approve the warrants. Start your motion to approve the warrants.
Motion to approve the warrants. Uh, general fund payroll, $21,636.50. Operating expenses, $18,736.78. Highway payroll, $12,038.83. Operating expenses, $18,484.25. Solid waste payroll, $2,101.90. Operating expenses, $213.29. Library payroll, $2,507.91. No operating expenses. Um, the next thing is operating expenses, Veterans Memorial, $194.99. ARPA funds, $8,692.75. FEMA money, $665.00. E checks payroll taxes, $24,064.36. Total for that line item is $33,617.10. Total operating expenses is $71,051.42. Total payroll, $38,285.14.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the warrants. Any discussion on the warrants? No questions or enough, no, no issues? Awesome. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the warrant signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Any other business that can be conducted while the board is in meeting? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So move. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye for Dave.
Dave, Dave's got an aye for things?